Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to this, the March 11th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting into order. Let the roll call show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for, with the exception of Councilmember Coumber, who has been excused. Tonight, we have a special treat. We have the Cresta Blanca Girl Scouts are here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.[24.84][24.84](APPLAUSE). So with that, I will turn it over to the Cresta Blanca Girl Scouts, and thank you very much for being here.
Color Guard, attention. Girl Scouts, attention. Color Guard, post the colors.[57.64][57.64](MUSIC)
Feel free to maneuver and take pictures if you wish. I see you in the back. Come on up front. Come on up front. Feel free to take pictures. The spot's up here in front.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.[79.25][79.25](APPLAUSE). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now say the Girl Scout Promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
And as we do every year at our Girl Scout proclamation, we always, we don't come empty-handed.[142.12][142.12](LAUGHTER).
Well, actually, we have the proclamation is coming up. Did you want, you want to do that after the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, well, thank you very much for doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Well done.[156.22][156.22](APPLAUSE). Okay, and we've got a little bit of business here, so just sit tight for a moment if you would. We just came out of the closed session, and it's my recollection that there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to our proclamations, we actually have three tonight. First one that we got, according to the agenda, is the American Red Cross proclamation. And we have, I believe, Kane Wong and Maria Camula Owen here. Oh, very good. So with that, we have a proclamation from the City of Livermore proclaiming American Red Cross Month, March 2019. And whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, to provide compassionate assistance to people impacted by personal, local, or national tragedies. And whereas since inception in 1898, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter has touched many lives in the local community. American Red Cross heroes in Livermore work tirelessly to help in times of disaster, give life-saving blood, provide support to members of the military and their families, teach safety preparedness classes, and donate their time, money, and services. And whereas in the past year, the American Red Cross trained over 86,800 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety, helped 1,828 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during the 838 local disasters, and provided local hospitals with over 75,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And whereas through the Pillowcase Project and the Home Fires Campaign, over 14,000 local individuals and families received fire protection and prevention training, supplies, and/or smoke alarms. And whereas this month is dedicated to all who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, now therefore the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims March 2019 as American Red Cross Month, and thanks those residents who volunteer their time, give blood, and donate to make a difference in the lives of others. Thank you very much.[313.02][313.02](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Scott. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Maria and I are from the Tri-Valley, and...
Are you speaking into the microphone? Then you'll be on camera.
Maria and I are here from the Tri-Valley. We live in the Tri-Valley. As a matter of fact, Maria lives in Livermore. And thank you for recognizing the Red Cross with all the details. But locally, we were here locally last, last year. There was a fire. I don't know if you remember that there's a, was a Chestnut Fire. And we work closely with the city staff, as well as the police department, and the parks and wrecks. And we look at Livermore, this particular event, as a very well orchestrated event. So we were very pleased with the coordination and the help we received from the city as to helping us create a shelter in the Park and Wreck Community Center. And we were able to take care of 24 residents and provide them shelter and financial assistance.
Hello, my name's Maria, and I've been a volunteer for the American Red Cross for 15 years, and a resident of Livermore proudly for the last 20 years. My husband and I relocated from Fremont then with two children, and at that time I did not know I had one in the oven.[394.28][394.28](LAUGHTER). But today, they're very, they're young adults, and they're thriving, and I thank the town of Livermore for helping us raise them and having a supportive environment such as great as this town is. That's why I stand here honored today, not only as an American Red Cross volunteer, but also as America Red Cross liaison to Livermore, in helping to uphold the A R C missions, to act in times of need, to provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, and national disasters. For example, the fire that took place here last year that Kane had spoke about. We also participated in the Yellow Command exercises teaming with Herb Cole from the city, the city's emergency manager, Claudia Young with the Human Services, and several other city officials and partners. And most recently, we surveyed six Livermore schools to list them as potential shelters in case of city or county disasters. It is our hope to survey additional facilities here in Livermore, such as those owned by faith-based organizations and philanthropy groups, so that Livermore is more than ready when a disaster hits. And so we ask for your support in helping us achieve that. Thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you very much for all of your efforts.[471.62][471.62](APPLAUSE). And I might mention that come June 15th, this community will be even better prepared to deal with disasters, because we will be cutting the ribbon on our new Emergency Operations Center. So look forward to that. Next, we have a proclamation for the proclaiming March 10th through the 16th as Girl Scout Week. And again, we have the Cresta Blanca Girl Scouts that will be presenting this too. So whereas on March 12th, 1912, Girl Scouts of the USA was founded in Savannah, Georgia by Juliette Gordon Lowe, with the goal of bringing girls out of isolated home environments and into community service in the open air. And whereas throughout their history, Girl Scouts helped build millions of girls' courage, confidence, and character through taking action, developing leadership skills, and connecting with their communities. In Girl Scouts, girls discover the fun, friendship, and power of girls uniting together to make the world a better place. And whereas as part of the Girl Scouts of Northern California, the Cresta Blanca Service Unit in Livermore serves close to 700 girls from kindergarten through high school, they are part of a movement that teaches them to be innovators, risk-takers, and self-motivating leaders. And whereas the Girl Scout organization has succeeded through the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds and areas of expertise, now therefore the City Council of the City of Livermore hereby proclaims March 10th through the 16th as Girl Scout Week, and recognizes the contributions of the Girl Scouts to the Livermore community.[583.38][583.38](APPLAUSE). And now comes one of my favorite parts.[585.38][585.38](LAUGHTER). Thank you. There we go.[588.38][588.38](LAUGHTER).[589.38][589.38](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much. Thank you. And now we move on to 2.03, which is a proclamation recognizing the 17th Annual March for Meals Month. This will be received by Kerry Oldes, a volunteer coordinator with the Spectrum Community Services. That, we have a proclamation recognizing the 17th Annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965, and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign on March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas in 2019, the observance of March for Meals celebrates 17 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Alameda County provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout Alameda County that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, or premature institutionalization, now therefore the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims March 2019 as 17th Annual March for Meals Month, and urges residents to take this month to honor Meals on Wheels of Alameda County, its programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Thank you.[740.88][740.88](APPLAUSE).
So my name is Kerry Oldes, and I'm the Tri-Valley Supervisor for the Meals on Wheels Program with Spectrum Community Services. I'm also a graduate of Livermore High School from 19-something.
Whatever.[761.66][761.66](LAUGHTER).
So I am very proud to be able to come back and work and serve the community that I grew up in, and that had a part in helping me become who I am today. Today alone, we served over 200 homebound seniors here in the Tri-Valley. That's 114 here in Livermore, 69 in Dublin, and 20, or 25 in Dublin, and 69 in Pleasanton. Each of these visits is not just the meal. It is us going and seeing these seniors that may not have anyone else to see them on a day-to-day basis. The other day, I had a volunteer go to make a delivery, and our senior was on the floor in her house. Luckily, we had a waiver. She hollered out. My volunteer went in, sat with her until the EMTs were able to come and take her, and take her to the hospital. If we had not been there that day, how long would she have laid on the floor? And for each meal that we take is a smile, it's a welfare check, it's nutrition in these seniors, in these senior stomachs that they may not be getting. So in this month of March, we've invited leaders throughout the community, throughout the state, to come and see what we do and how we do it. Anyone that would like to volunteer, I'm always looking for volunteers. I need currently, I need at least 12 new volunteers to fill the positions as the need for our seniors increases. And I thank you for making this proclamation for us, and knowing that there is a need here, and we're doing our best to fill it. Thank you.[853.43][853.43](APPLAUSE).
And what is the best way for someone to get in touch with you if they wanted to volunteer? I've been some of the ride-alongs with the Meals on Wheels Program, and it's wonderful. And the stories that you have related where these volunteers and drivers have saved people's lives because of the contact and the personal touch that they provide. So what's the best way to get in touch with you if somebody wanted to volunteer for Meals on Wheels?
Well, the best way is actually directly to my email. I am the volunteer coordinator, so I do all the intake for our volunteers. So my email is simply my name at C, my last name is Oldes, O-L-D-E-S, at spectrumcs.org. We do have a website that you're happy, that we're happy to have you go to, but contacting me directly is the best way to make sure that I get in touch with you, and you get in touch with me, and we get this process going. But the mayor will be coming out to join us. We have other people coming to see us and coming along on our ride-alongs. If you want to participate in something as simple as just a one-time event, I'm happy to set that up for you. If you have nothing better to do for two hours during your day, you can come and help me serve a meal. Thank you.
And once again, that email address is?
It is C-O-L-D-E-S at spectrumcs.org.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[932.13][932.13](APPLAUSE).
Great. A lot of great people doing great things for the community. I certainly appreciate that. With that, moving on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action during this time, but I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And with that, I'm going to open the Citizens Forum. I have four cards so far. Greg Scott, Neil Herrick, John Stein, and Brent Seiler. Mr. Scott.
I am Greg Scott. I speak on homelessness in Livermore. I also write the homeless games letters to the Editor and the Independent. Many thanks to the Independent for publishing and posting the letters. Thank you also to Councilman Carling for buying lunch for me at a thriving downtown establishment. I hope I was helpful and informative to you, Councilman Carling, on the topic of homelessness in Livermore. I emphasize with Councilman Carling the need for safe parking for the homeless living in their cars. It is the simplest, though not simple, implementation to help the homeless. I express that the safe parking place needs to be on public land for multiple reasons, mainly for liability reasons. A theme here is to create a commons for homeless living in their cars, to have a place to go, to sleep, bathe, wash clothes, and otherwise rest, hopefully to prepare for employment. This is a start to a more encompassing commons for homeless who do not have cars. Without a commons, the question of where do we expect the homeless to go cannot be answered. The public land is a more conducive, it's more conducive for participants to exhibit and be more responsible to an ownership of the environs than on private land. This is part of the idea of a hand-up, not a hand-out. In an article in the Independent on Thursday 28th of February, Dr. Gatz wrote about the priorities and their spending of the City of Livermore. The top three priorities listed were the downtown plan, homelessness and affordable housing, and an innovation nucleus. It is unfortunate that homelessness and affordable housing are lumped together. So-called affordable housing is not going to solve homelessness. In an era where the cost of housing is accelerating away from the level of wages, what does affordable housing mean? Housing is overpriced in the current debt bubble. Real estate evaluations are inflated by grotesque usury. What will happen to real estate evaluations, wages, and jobs if the current debt bubble burst? Currently in the United States, there's over $50 trillion in consumer and corporate debt. California has over $400 billion in unfunded pension obligations. The millennials are the most indebted generation in American history. How are the majority of millennials and those without sufficient assets going to purchase housing if the price of housing is accelerating away from the level of wages? Obviously, we're not going to solve homelessness on the, or the housing crisis by regular housing as we know it. We need to be more innovative in this area. In the last City Council meeting, Mayor Mashan, you stated that tough sheds do not, did not work in Oakland. Our focus should be Livermore. Tough sheds could work in Livermore and be a godsend to a number of homeless here. A tough shed certainly would have lengthened the life of Carl Fainer, who slept in his car seat for 10 years. We keep ruling out things that did not work elsewhere when we should and can make them work here in Livermore. To Joe Morgan, whoever you are, I am well aware that Lee has been out there a long time rotting and needs help. Lee rots next to an empty Orchard Supply Hardware building with bathrooms while we continue to play the mostly fatuous and expensive homeless games. It was so instilled in me the urgency imperative and priority of homelessness by the presentation given by the Homeless Services Commission in the last City Council meetings, that I am now going to greet the homeless by asking, what is for dessert, instead of saying hello?[1130.83][1130.83](APPLAUSE).
Neil Herrick, John Stein, Brent Seiler.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. I've been gone for a while. Much-needed vacation. I've come back recharged and ready to go. I'm looking forward this year to the City Council addressing the issues that the citizenry need. Homelessness, we've discussed, affordable housing, all the regular infrastructure stuff. I look forward to working with the city, positive feedback, thoughts. Appreciate all of your time. This is a tough job. It's a tough town, and thank you.
Wait, there's no but?[1175.33][1175.33](LAUGHTER). Thank you, Mr. Herrick. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for committing to the community. Mr. Stein and Brent Seiler.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I've been driving Valacitos Road, Isabelle Expressway now, for almost 50 years. When I first came to Livermore, it took about 15 minutes to get from my house to work. Occasionally, a tomato truck going to Haywood would overturn, and that would delay things, but generally 15 minutes. Since then, they've straightened the road, widened it mostly to four lanes, and it now takes me 40 to 45 minutes to get to work. Basically, there are two problems. One is the section that's still two lanes, and the other is the metering lights at both ends. Even if we were totally widened to four lanes, as long as the metering lights are there, and the traffic congestion exists on 580 and 680, it will continue to be a linear parking lot. So at some point, either the congestion issues on 580 and 680 during commute hours have to be addressed, or we will have spent hundreds of millions of dollars on a linear parking lot. Also, it appears that part of the paving was inadequate for semis and gravel trucks, and a lot of potholes are appearing, and it gets sort of exciting when people try to dart around them. But all in all, the road is better, but the traffic is worse. Also, I'd like to thank the city for starting to convert the sound wall along homes from a sound wall to what it should have been originally, a retaining wall. And hopefully, in the next year or so, we can open the sidewalks again. Thank you.
Actually, it wasn't even, excuse me, we have a policy here that I want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable speaking to the councils, so I don't allow booing. And since they don't allow booing for equal time, I don't allow, we don't allow clapping, because I don't want people to feel intimidated that if somebody isn't speaking on a subject that they support, I want to make sure that they don't feel uncomfortable. So we don't applaud, and we don't boo. So just with that, thank you. But to address Mr. Stein's comments, yeah, we're going to be addressing the, but that was never actually a sound wall even. Wasn't a retaining wall, it was a decorative wall. So it wasn't even, it wasn't even a sound wall. It was, it was decorative. But unfortunately, people piled a bunch of dirt up behind it, and that's one of the reasons it failed. Highway 84, I also drive that. I used to, I drove that for 30 years myself. Measure BB funds are going to expand that, so it's going to go four lanes all the way down to Sanol, so it's going to be a great improvement there. You're right, that was just paved. And I sit on the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I've spoken with the executive director there, and he has talked to Caltrans about the failure of that roadbed, which should not have happened. And that will be addressed in the very near future. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. But ACTC and Caltrans are working on that as well. So thank you. Mr. Seiler.
I wish it was still the two lanes, so we could have fun cruising through there real quick.[1399.57][1399.57](LAUGHTER). Council, thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight on homelessness. I'd like to start by saying how appreciative I am that this council has taken on the challenge in addressing the growing concern of homelessness in Livermore. As we know from past surveys, many, not all, who are homeless have direct ties to our community or to the Tri-Valley. Some who are veterans serving from the Vietnam War, to the more recent ones in Afghan and Over the past several council meetings, to articles in print and social media, much has been said and written about this issue. There are many interfaith and other organizations who receive funding from the city to help address the needs of those without a roof over their head, and applaud them for taking on the challenge. From talking with people who are homeless, their number-one priority is to get a roof over their head. Most do not care if it's permanent affordable housing, which is the direction the city has been taking for the, for at least the last four to six years, or some form of transitional housing. Other cities are experimenting with this type of housing. Each of the cities that the council spoke about in the last council meeting have all invested in some form of transitional housing. Why? They realize the time it would take to follow the traditional affordable housing model would not address the growing demand. Yet my council does not seem to want to embrace the idea of transitional housing, because every time it's brought up, the council will comment as to why it cannot be done. However, my council has approved city staff to acquire real property for future development across Livermore. Why then can we not acquire real property for transitional homes to help those with jobs, or those looking for jobs, and living in cars and tents? These individuals are primed for success and can be moved to more stable environment. We have one gentleman who lives down by the creek. He actually works at a restaurant downtown. He cooks your food, and he lives in a tent by Walmart. It has been stated on more than one occasion by my council, city staff, and experts in the field of homelessness, that housing is the number-one item that brings stability to individuals. I ask my council to take off the blindfold toward traditional, or toward transitional housing, and make an investment into the people who are members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seiler. Okay, those are the Citizens Forum, Citizens Forum cards that I have. Moving on to the consent calendar. Okay, does anybody wish to pull any items for discussion on the consent calendar? Okay. Okay. You have commented on 4.01. I have a comment card from Ian North for 4.02. Bring up Mr. North.
Mr. Karlin.
Oh, Karlin, I'm sorry.
Yes. My handwriting's awful.
So is mine. But usually I can decipher. Okay, Karlin, K-A-R?
K-A-R.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Oh, 4.02 is what I wanted. Sorry.
Yeah, 4.02.
All right, same old.
Okay. So, you know, I've always wondered, you know, what the city was trying to do to actually implement their active transportation plan that you formed a committee for. And then all of a sudden, reading through this obscure, you know, rewording of the document, I realized part of the reason why you guys are failing at implementing this. It's not just the fact that funding comes over small times, it's also that the city code is set up to discourage developers from making endpoint improvements for bike parking and other things. In the city code, which you're now amending, or proposing to amend, to actually make more strict to discourage bike parking, it requires 10 bicycle parking stalls per car spot replaced. First of all, I don't know of a car that takes, you know, 10 people that parks in most places, even when it's completely full. Second of all, you know, requiring that many spaces is actually about the same space for 10 bike spots as it is for one car. Means that developers are not going to want to, or have any incentive to put bike parking in lieu of car parking. On top of that, it requires asking either the planning commission or the city engineer for permission to do this, rather than making this a by-right decision for some amount of the bike parking, which would...
Okay, does anybody wish to pull any items for discussion on the consent calendar? Okay. You have a comment on 4.01. I have a comment card from Ian North for 4.02. Bring up Mr. North.
Mr. Carlin.
Oh, Carlin, I'm sorry.
Yes. My handwriting's awful.
So is mine, but usually I can decipher. Okay, Carlin, K-A-R.
L-I-N.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
4.02 is what I wanted, sorry.
Yeah, 4.02.
All right, same old.
Okay. So, you know, I've always wondered, you know, what the city was trying to do to actually implement their active transportation plan that you formed a committee for. And then all of a sudden, reading through this obscure, you know, rewording of the document, I realized part of the reason why you guys are failing at implementing this. It's not just the fact that funding comes over small times, it's also that the city code is set up to discourage developers from making endpoint improvements for bike parking and other things. In the city code, which you're now amending or proposing to amend to actually make more strict to discourage bike parking, it requires 10 bicycle parking stalls per car spot replaced. First of all, I don't know of a car that takes, you know, 10 people that parks in most places, even when it's completely full. Second of all, you know, requiring that many spaces is actually about the same space for 10 bike spots as it is for one car. Means that developers are not going to want to or have any incentive to put bike parking in lieu of car parking. On top of that, it requires asking either the planning commission or the city engineer for permission to do this, rather than making this a buy right decision for some amount of the bike parking, which would actually encourage developers to build this into their plans in certain regions of town. You know, any active transportation plan, which I know the city has to slowly implement due to funding reasons, would be helped immensely if businesses started to build out endpoint parking for bicyclists and they had the incentive to actually do this. I'm not saying don't approve this language, but I do want to add a point that Stephen DeBar asked I could make, because he's not here today, which is, has any developer actually taken advantage of this provision in the past to reduce their parking requirement? And if not, why isn't the city trying to think about whether this is either a worthless requirement and they should just strike it from the code, or amending it in a way so it's actually used and implemented in practice? You know, this is a way that you could actually further city policy goals in a very cheap way if those are your goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Mr. Spence, I recall in last meeting, we were talking about the Prologis, the RK Logistics Development, and I specifically recall that we did have required bike parking in that project. So I know that we do require bicycle parking, I guess that's bicycle parking in projects. Would you care?
Sure, yes. All new projects are required to provide bicycle parking, so there is a basic minimum standard. This is for additional parking. If the developer sees a demand for additional bike parking or needs to reduce the number of spaces, then there is some flexibility. We have had a number of developers over time take advantage of this. It's usually at the level of one or two spaces for 10 to 20 bicycle parking spaces.
Okay, this is all part of our Complete Streets programs as well.
So to speak to Mr. Carlin's question, then, some developers have taken advantage of this?
Yes, they have. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Warner?
Well, I just wanted to thank you on figure 4.7 on page 36 on the accessory structures, just making the distance from the wall versus the edge of the eve, just because I just went through the process of trying to build one of these things, and it was painful because of that, but this is, makes it a lot better. So thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment on 4.08. Mr. Stein alluded to this in his comments, but just to show that after working with the community for almost six years now, trying to get the Holmes Wall repaired, we're now looking to get a little more aggressive on this because this does represent, this is the entryway to our, to our city, so we want to make sure that we can get this done in a timely fashion. So this 4.08 is to get the process moving, to get that decorative wall repaired and ultimately replaced. So very happy to see this moving on.
So you're going to make it just like the new entrance sign down there?
I really like that, yeah. That's a great, it's a great sign. Okay, so with that, consent calendars typically move on a single motion. Do I have a motion for the consent calendar? Moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The pass unanimously. Thank you very much. We have no public hearings tonight. Moving on to matters for consideration, this is the discussion in direction regarding the regulation of tobacco, including flavored tobacco and vaping fluids, and I guess that's most of the folks who are here tonight on that one. Great, well, thank you for coming out. Certainly appreciate that, and we'll take your comments shortly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'll be making your staff's presentation this evening on this particular item. The item before you in the staff report contains information at the council's request. Back in November of last year, the council requested information about its ability to regulate vaping and tobacco products. Since that date, the LPD has conducted minor decoy operations targeting merchants that sell tobacco and vaping products to ensure that they are indeed complying with the law. The topic has been discussed by the Intergovernmental Committee. That is the committee made up of representatives from the city of Livermore, the Livermore Unified School District, and the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. In addition, staff and a number of councilmembers have met and received information from the school district and groups advocating for local ordinance, and we have researched the city's regulatory authority and have presented that to you in your staff report today. Before you in that report is an overview of your authority, as well as the materials that have been received from advocacy groups. What we're seeking from you this evening is direction with regard to two items. One, an information campaign to educate minors about the negative effects of tobacco use and vaping. And two, whether or not to develop an ordinance to regulate and license tobacco retailers in Livermore. To begin with your authority, there's two areas of authority that you have that you can rely upon. The first is the, in state legislation, is the 2003 Cigarette Tobacco Licensing Act in California. That expressly allows the cities and local authorities to license tobacco retailers. In addition, there's federal legislation, which is the 2009 Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act. That grants a number of authorities to you as a local body to regulate certain aspects. It does prohibit you from taking certain actions that the federal government has occupied, advertising, labeling, things like that, but otherwise grants you broad discretion. The extent of your regulatory authority is very broad. First, it starts off, if you just wanted to participate by enforcing existing laws that prohibit the sale of tobacco to minors, that's your current situation. You can go to the next step, which is to license tobacco retailers, which is to require anybody selling tobacco or tobacco products in Livermore to obtain a license from the city. You can then go to the next step, which is to regulate tobacco retailers. And some of the information before you today, and we'll get a bit deeper into that in a moment, what does that include? Location requirements, you can prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco, you can limit the number of retailers, basically more along the lines of your traditional regulatory authority. So again, with regard, with regard to that, you have certain regulations with regard to federal government and state government that allow you to, to deal with that. With your traditional authority, you have your standard constraints, which is your land use and your regulatory authority, which are bounded by your typical constitutional requirements and other, other needs. Now depending upon the scope of the regulations, if should you seek to go there, we may need to count for existing uses. For example, if you have a distance requirement, that a tobacco retailer cannot be within a certain area or certain distance from a sensitive use, a school, a park, there may already be an existing retailer within that area. We would need to deal with that, either advertise that or figure out how to deal with that prior pre-existing use, but there are opportunities. In your staff report, you have examples of ordinances adopted by other cities. For example, the city of Dublin, their ordinance is a licensing, has a licensing requirement for tobacco retailers, and also has separate separation requirements from sensitive receptors. Alameda's ordinance before you is probably the most comprehensive, and that's based upon the model ordinance that was developed by Change Lab Solutions and contains many of the asks that are in your packet today from some of the advocacy groups. That particular ordinance bans flavored tobacco products, including menthol, prohibits sales in pharmacies, prohibits retailers from being within 300 feet from sensitive uses, limits the number of retailers to one per 2,500 residents, and has minimum package and pricing requirements for tobacco products. Another ordinance in your packet today to consider as far as giving direction to staff is Oakland, which has banned the sale of flavored tobaccos throughout its city. Since you do have a broad area of discretion here, the staff report does focus on certain asks that were made by the group Flavors Hook Kids Livermore. One of the asks again was to limit the number of licenses to one per 2,500 residents. As the staff report indicates, that may have worked in Alamina, but we need to see what that would do in here in Livermore, should you give that direction. We already have a population of over 90,000 residents, and that would limit the number of licenses to 36. You can do that, but you need to be cognizant that you currently have 67 tobacco retailers in Livermore. So you have well in excess of that number. You can prohibit the sale, the ask is also to prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products. The ordinance does allow you to do that. My request would be that we focus that on defining what is flavored, and one of the examples I used is the candy, the fruit, the sweet flavors that are the new, are the new type of product in advertising that's being occurring for these type of tobacco products. The third ask is to establish minimum sales price for tobacco products. That could be challenging to enforce. If the council's direction is to pursue that, we will evaluate that and return to you with some examples of how we may be able to accomplish that. I also highlighted in the staff report, other cities have approached that complex problem in other areas as follows. Federally, the use of Sudafedrine, the purchase of Sudafedrine requires a customer to sign a logbook. They have to provide their driver's license, they have to provide their owner their information in order to acquire that product. That's one avenue that has a clear history and can be enforced. Another way is, in the city of Los Angeles, they have an ordinance that requires you, again, to complete a logbook to buy ammunition. So that may be an opportunity here as well, just something to consider. The next ask is to prohibit the sale of tobacco products within 1,000 feet of sensitive receptors. That is, again, one of your traditional requirements and regulations. You can, you can adopt that, should you so choose. The only issue that would be, again, if there's existing grandfather use within that, within that area, we'd have to figure out how to deal with that. It would not be immediate enforcement, it would have to be delayed enforcement. The last one is, ask is to prohibit pharmacies from selling tobacco and tobacco products. That's rather novel approach. I know Alamina has done that. If that is the council's direction, we can explore that to see what we need to do. That would require additional research to make sure that we have addressed equal protection issues. With that, that concludes my presentation today. I am available for questions, but I, we are seeking from staff, direction on the next steps. One, opportunities to partner with intergovernmental agencies for an information campaign and potentially consistent messaging, as well as, should it be the council's desire to develop an ordinance, what would be the flavor you're looking for? But I'm pumped. Available for questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Warner?
I've got one with respect to, you just mentioned grandfathering, and you mentioned it with respect to the, within a certain radius. You said you'd have to grandfather, but what about if we went down the path of the number of licenses per population? You said that we have excess licenses. Would that also be something that would be grandfathered?
That is correct. You would not have a situation where you take your 67 existing and then cut those down to 33. Those 67 would continue to exist. You're oversubscribed, should you accept that particular ask and adopt an ordinance to limit it to one per 2,500 residents. So that would be your universe for now.
So I just want a little more detail on how the grandfathering works. If someone sold a business to somebody else, does that grandfathering persist?
The grandfathering concept is, as long as the use continues to exist, is not abandoned and is not expanded, that operation can continue. There are opportunities to sunset. We need to go through an economic analysis to figure out, have they received their return on investment for that particular operation? So should the council want to go there, we would actually engage in that process.
So the sun setting, you didn't mention it, but that's an option to think about if we went down that path.
If that's the goal, we would look at that, and we'd have to return to you with an economic analysis of when that would actually take effect to sunset everything, yes.
So then, and just with respect to how this would work, could you, if we went and limited the number of licenses, but they were grandfathered, I mean, there's not a, I mean, that's one step, then we'd have to, we could, do we have to at the same time or later talk about the sun setting provisions?
Same time. Maybe most effective to do that at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carling?
So following some of the questions that my colleague asked, if suppose we limited the number of licenses per the suggestion from this group, somebody wants to build a gas station, a new gas station in a convenience store, they would be prohibited from selling tobacco?
If you had, correct, if you had an ordinance that set the limit in the number of licenses in town, and you have, already have more licenses than you would allow, there would not be a new license for that new operation, correct?
What would the cost of a license be? I bet you're going to tell me it's whatever we set, but what's typical?
Actually, it's, it'll give you a lurely answer, it depends, in defense of your regulatory scheme. So the fee is, we cannot charge a fee for a license that exceeds the cost of service provided. So depending on the scope and extent of your regulation, we would go through a fee study with staff to determine how many staff resources are needed to, one, receive, address, issue that particular license, and to do the enforcement scheme as far as monitoring.
I have one more question regarding one of the questions you have, providing direction the opportunities to engage in an information campaign. Why do we have, why does the council have to approve an information campaign on the negative effects of tobacco use? Why do we have to do that?
We're seeking your direction, should you want to engage in that campaign? Should you want to extend and utilize city resources to, one, this information the staff before you is nothing that has not been vetted by city staff.
So for the city's staff to work with others?
Correct.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Monroe?
A couple of questions on both issues. One is, how many, in terms of the sun setting or the grandfathering in of existing places selling tobacco, how many would be directly affected to the extent that it would, they'd go out of business or that, you know? In other words, what's, what's the, for how many places that sell tobacco, is this just a minor part of their business, and for how many is it the entire business?
That would be the question. We have not researched that yet, but that would be the question for us to analyze, which is, is this a, say, a grocery store that has a number of other products, and this is a small portion of their bottom line? Or is this a standalone shop that is exclusively dedicated to selling tobacco products? And the economic effect would be different between those two.
And then the second question is, the relationship between controlling advertising and information campaign. I'm assuming that we can't control what the tobacco companies do, but we can control what we put next to them, so to speak? For example, for example, you could have, here's the advertisement and here's the, but they're wrong. That kind, would that work?
You could do that as long as you didn't require the advertiser, the tobacco advertiser, to include that as part of their advertisement.
Any other questions? Okay, I have 30 cards, and so what I would ask is, if you agree with the person that's speaking, if you agree with their points, just raise their hand, raise your hand, and that way the council can see the affirmation, and if you, if the person's speaking and you don't agree, he doesn't see, he or she doesn't see if the audience agrees or disagrees. The council can see if you guys agree or disagree with what the speaker is saying. So if you agree with what they're saying, raise your hand, and we will see the level of support in the audience. And again, I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if, if somebody has all your good points, just say, yeah, what he said, I agree, and then that we can move along a little bit more quickly. But I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard. So with that, I have Van Rini, Irene Nika, and Daniel Widner. Mr. Rini.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I was thinking, just just last week, Alexandria Octavio Cortez was speaking, and she considered capitalism irredeemable, and I don't, you know, align 100% with AOC, but I can imagine she was thinking about the insidious behavior of the tobacco industry and marketing candy-flavored, you know, vaping products to deliver nicotine delivery systems to kids, and that just goes beyond the pale. And I think it's high time every aspect of government, federal, state, and local, rein in to do whatever they can to stop this kind of practice. The kind of damage that can be done to kids is clearly documented, especially, you know, the adolescents, when their brains are forming, and it severely debilitates their ability not only as adolescents, but later on in life, you know, completely disrupting brain connections that enable them to be fully functional. So I strongly recommend doing whatever you can. I can't get into the weeds on this particular subject matter, but I think you've got a staff that's quite adequate at delivering the kind of actions that you wish them to take, and you, like, you don't have the whole world watching, but you've got at least 30 of us keeping an eye on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rini. Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, Irene Nika, Daniel Widner, and Bob Gordo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak on this issue. My name is Daniel Widner. I work for the American Cancer Society and am a ACS CAN volunteer. So I'm also a resident of Livermore for the last nine years. My wife and I are raising two children in this great city, and I'm here today to talk about the need for regulation of tobacco, including flavored tobacco and vaping fluid. While cigarette smoking among youth has declined, the use of e-cigarettes and hookah has increased. The U.S. General Surgeon reported the tobacco industry documents stated that sweeter flavors for the young are specifically targeted at smokers. Beginning cigarette smokers and teenager, excuse me, I messed this up. Sweeter flavors are for younger smokers, beginning cigarette smokers and teenagers. Another industry document stated that while different cigars target a variety of markets, all flavored tobacco products tend to appeal primarily towards younger consumers. I implore the city to prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Your initial evaluation is correct in that Your initial evaluation is correct in that you will need to have proper definitions, however, it does not go far enough. You need to include mint and menthol flavored products. Menthol is derived from mint. In addition to the fresh odor and mint flavor, it has an aesthetic effect that masks the harshness of tobacco and allows the user to inhale the smoke more deeply into their lungs. Among all smokers, menthol cigarettes are the most popular among 12- to 17-year-olds. While cigarette smoking has declined, menthol cigarette sales have increased, especially among young people and new smokers. When surveyed, youth report believing that e-cigarettes are not harmful. While perhaps safer than combustible tobacco, e-cigarettes are not safe. They contain toxins, including metals, unique to the delivery systems, and they also contain nicotine, which is highly addictive. E-cigarettes are not a proven sensation device, and they are not regulated as such. We should be doing everything that we can to prevent our youth from beginning this deadly addiction, as well as supporting the efforts for those who are trying to quit. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Nika, Bob Gordo, and Owen Weiss-Pirick.
Sorry.
Can't take you anywhere.
Hi, my name is Irene Nika. I work for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and I'm the Northern California Grassroots Manager. 95% of tobacco users begin, are addicted before the age of 21. Most youth who report using tobacco say they begin with a flavored product. Flavored tobacco products are available in thousands of flavors and are often marketed with names like Jolly Rancher, Sour Patch, Gummy Bear, or Cotton Candy, even the packages designed to look like popular candies whose names the products have stolen. These products are clearly being targeted at youth. They are also packaged in small packs that are sold inexpensively. Small cigars and cigarets are often packaged to be sold for as little as five for a dollar, which adds an additional appeal to price-sensitive youth. These inexpensive products make it easy for youth to experiment, creating a minimum pack size, an additional deterrent for beginning smokers who often have limited disposable income. Communities of color in the LGB population have also been targeted by predatory marketing for menthol cigarettes and consequently use these products at higher levels, higher rates. These are populations who already suffer a large burden of health disparities. Even infrequent smoking by adolescents has been shown to increase the likelihood they will become a regular smoker. We ask that you create a comprehensive smoking ordinance, and we support an ordinance that has fees with sufficient for enforcement that prohibit all flavored tobacco, including menthol cigarettes, minimum pack size or minimum price, no sales within 1,000 feet of use-sensitive areas or within 500 feet of another retailer. And we also would like no sales in pharmacies, and we'd like you to protect our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Gordo, Owen Weiss-Pirick, and Rod Liu.
Yes, good evening. There are some wonderful young people who will also be speaking very soon, but I'm honored to be here as well, another adult who cares about our young people. My name is Bob Gordon, a member of the Alameda County Tobacco Coalition, working to protect young people from the devastating effects of tobacco and all nicotine products in our communities. Specifically, I'd like to address the part of the proposal to eliminate the sales of tobacco and other nicotine products in pharmacies. Along with the other measures being discussed, we respectfully ask you to consider a policy that would make it so a tobacco retailer license is no longer granted to a pharmacy. The staff report I saw said this is a novel approach that needs in-depth research to ensure the regulations will withstand judicial scrutiny, but we think that we can be of help to you. You and others listening may not know, but 21 other California communities have successfully eliminated the sale of all nicotine products in pharmacies, starting with San Francisco in 2008, and most recently this past November, as we heard, in the city of Alameda. And it was mentioned about equal protection issues and so forth, so the courts have thoroughly settled this. Right after San Francisco passed its ordinance in 2008, there were three lawsuits. And so that was now six years ago that those were, that they were, I don't mean the legal term settled, but I'm trying to say that it was resolved. And then many communities have been able to go forward, including Boston and New York City, as well with this policy. So it's certainly not novel to a lot of us who have been working on the issue for a long time. So why such a policy in Livermore? Well, we know that young people frequent our drugstores, and when they arrive at a front counter of the drugstore with their purchases, they usually see a huge wall, we call it a power wall, of all the tobacco advertising and all the products that are there. Marlboro, Camel, candy-flavored tobacco advertising that is associated with it. So community members and their elected officials do have the power to restrict the tobacco retailer license, to make it that local pharmacies will no longer sell tobacco. And therefore, you have the power, we have the power to change what a pharmacy is, what a drugstore is in Livermore for a whole new generation of young people. I've submitted a list of the pharmacies in Livermore, along with frequently asked question sheet, and a list of the 21 communities that have already passed a tobacco-free pharmacy policy in California. So I want to thank you so much for your consideration and your kind attention.
Thank you. If I could just ask a quick question of staff, oh, thank you. A quick question of staff, because this may come up in additional comments. I know San Francisco's a charter city, Oakland's a charter city, is Alameda a charter city? No? Oh, okay.
I should know that, but I don't know that as I said.
That's okay, because I didn't, I don't know either, but the reason being is because there are different rules for charter cities and what a charter city can do versus what Livermore is a general law city. So I just thought I'd throw that out there for real quick so we can figure that one out later, but-
One of our assistant city attorneys is at home watching right now, so I'm sure she'll let me know in a few minutes.
Okay, that's right. Okay, great, thank you. Owen Weiss-Pirick, Rod Liu, Ariella Angelini Stewart.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear my public comment. My name is Owen Weiss-Pirick. I am a community engagement coordinator with an organization called Bay Area Community Resources. I'm currently working on a project to activate, you know, some young folks at Los Pocito College to do something about the issue of their community using vaping products and being targeted by the tobacco industry. And I want to talk to you today about why it's important for the city of Livermore to adopt a tobacco retail license. The reality is, is that, you know, young people are getting their hands on flavored tobacco products that are marketed and targeted to them. And without a tobacco retail license, local city governments like Livermore's, like Livermore don't have a whole lot of power to do anything about that. A tobacco retail license gives cities funding for enforcement. If there's no money, there's no enforcement. If there's no enforcement, businesses might not always follow the law. Right now, a retailer can sell tobacco to a kid here in Livermore, and there would be no meaningful, there may be no meaningful consequences for the retailer. Cities that have a tobacco retail license do it better. For example, in 2006, the city of Bumatt had a whopping 63% of its retailers caught selling to minors. Today, now that it has a tobacco retail license, that number is down to 20%. In 2007, Los Angeles County had no tobacco retail license, and about 30.6% of its tobacco retailers were caught selling to kids. Today, with a tobacco retail license, their youth sale rate has dropped to just 8%. So long story short, tobacco retail licenses protect kids. And if I may, I would like to submit some evidence to the council.
Give that to the city clerk, please.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in response to the question, yes, Alameda is a charter city.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Very good. Well, Rod Liu, Ariella Angelini Stewart, Stephanie Kishi. Mr. Liu.
Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little about our concerns. My name is Rod Liu, and I am the director of a health organization called Appeal, which works primarily with the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community. I also speak to you as a parent of a young teenage boy, and I'll be sharing comments about both. Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities are some of the fastest-growing populations in the Bay Area and in the country. And we know that the targeting of communities of colors has been an integral part of the tobacco industry's strategies. We know that from their own documents. And that includes the targeting of Asian-Americans and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. While we're concerned with the rise of youth using vaping and e-cigarettes, Asian-American communities have even greater cause to be upset. A recent study found that Asian-American girls have the highest rate of e-cigarette use among all adolescent girls. With tobacco being associated with the top three killers of Asian-Americans in California, heart disease, cancer, and stroke, this certainly is a cause for concern. Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders are a separate group, and they actually have the highest use among all middle school and high school students for both tobacco products and for e-cigarettes. And it's not a coincidence that for e-cigarettes, the e-juice comes in flavors that are named lychee, paki, taro, passion fruit, which, if you recognize some of those, you may be from the Asian-American community. So it is clear that the targeting is very direct. And the tobacco companies know what they're doing. This is an approach that has been used time and time again. It's really important also to include menthol as part of the flavors, because Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders have the second highest use of menthol cigarettes among all ethnic groups. Even more concerning is a persistent perception among adolescents and young adults that vaping and e-cigarettes are harmful. So on a personal level, as a parent of a young teen, I spend every opportunity I can to tell them about the hazards of tobacco and e-cigarette use. And while that has been impactful, it is not enough. Education needs to be paired with strong regulations that can support and protect our youth from the hazards of the tobacco industry and the targeting. So I urge you to consider the strongest measures in not only the retail license, but other measures that will ban and get rid of some of the other flavored products. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. There's about half a dozen seats over here if anybody wants to sit down. There's a few over here. Ariella Angelini Stewart, Stephanie Kishi, Sarah Ly.
Good evening. We, the teens of the Livermore School District, are at the front of a constant war. Every day, we are put under fire against an army of products that will eventually kill us. These products are vaping products. My name is Ariella Angelini Stewart, and I am the president of the Peer Educators Club that helps to raise awareness about the dangers of vaping. I've also had the horror of watching my peers fall to these products. One of my favorite things about this club is our shirts. I know, it sounds crazy, but I love them, because not only do they have our fantastic logo, but they also have this number. And this number is 480,000. And that represents the amount of people each year that are killed by tobacco-related diseases. And this number is only going to be growing with the increase in vaping, and we have to stop this at the source. The source is flavored products. Four out of five teens will start with a flavored product over an unflavored product. It is clear that with unicorn milk and nacho cheese, they are targeting us. They're not targeting you, we're the targets. We have to stop this at the source, so please help us to ban flavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Kishi, Sarah Ly, Regina Molotaris.
Good evening, Livermore City Council. My name is Stephanie Kishi, a ninth grader from Granada High School. I am here today because I think it would be beneficial for our city to restrict the sale of flavored vape slash tobacco products. Teens and even younger kids are lured to flavored vapes because they have over 15,500 flavors, like cotton candy, bubble gum, tutti fruity, and strawberry. Many teens are addicted to the nicotine in the vape products, and the amount of nicotine in these products are insanely high. In one joule of vape device, there are 59 milligrams or a pack of 20 cigarettes worth of nicotine. That will affect a teen's still-developing brain, as their brain won't be fully developed until around age 25. The vape products might also increase the chance of a teen to become addicted to drugs and/or smoke cigarettes. My grandmother, an ex-smoker, said that she smoked because it was cool during, at that time, the 1950s. Today, many kids might see vaping products as cool. History repeats itself, so please don't let this happen again with vaping being cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Ly, Regina Molotaris, Davis Stewart.
My name is Sarah Ly, and I am a sophomore at Granada High School. Vaping is becoming increasingly commonplace in the city's high schools at an alarming rate, as vaping products have become more accessible to younger and younger youths. I have frequently seen other students at my school vape, and it is often hard to recognize since many vaping products resemble other ordinary objects, such as pens or USB drives. These products are being advertised toward not only teens but even children, which is especially concerning. Use of these e-cigarettes is proven to lead to long-term damage to multiple brain functions. Another concern is that some of the substances in flavored vaping products are proven to cause serious health problems in the future, such as heart and lung disease. Advertising of and labels on flavored e-cigarettes remain loosely regulated, so it is very likely that there are unknown substances that could possibly be toxic or carcinogenic. Since vaping products are still quite new, scientists still do not know the long-term effects, which makes it even more dangerous to use them. This growing epidemic has to be addressed. So we ask that the city council, to protect the health of its youth, restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Molotaris, Davis Stewart, and Camille Laron.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Regina Molotaris. I'm a freshman at Granada High School, and I have lived in Livermore my whole life. I'm involved in several community service clubs, and we help do great things in our community. It is time that we really get serious about getting rid of vaping and smoking in our schools. Vaping is a serious problem amongst teenagers and delivers far more nicotine than cigarettes ever could. Smoking is the cause of one out of five deaths in the U.S. People are getting addicted younger and younger. Every day that I go to the bathroom in my school, there are people vaping. We need to get serious about stopping vaping in our schools and deterring teenagers from vaping and smoking. This has to be done at the level of an anti-alcohol program like the DARE program. I do not know if this is the correct answer or not, but we really need to address this problem. I hope that the council will take measures about the restriction of flavored tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Davis Stewart, Connie Laron, and Ahalia Rajesh.
Hello, my name is Dario Stewart, and I'm a freshman at Granada. I would just like to point out that this is not, like, just an issue for high school students, but also in middle school students. I have some friends who have siblings in middle school, and they tell me that it is a big issue in middle school, and kids are also vaping in middle school. This is most likely because of the flavored juices and products. This targets the young kids and will make them addicted basically for life unless they do not get help. Thank you.
Dario, thank you. Sorry to mess up your name. Camille Laron, Ahalia Rajesh, Zoe Beaker.
Hello, my name is Camille Laron, and I'm a ninth grader at Granada High. I am part of Peer Educators Club. I have noticed that many of my peers have tried out vaping out of curiosity, however they have now become addicted. The main reason they were curious in the first place was due to the colorful packaging and range of flavors. There are numerous carcinogenic chemicals in these flavored juices, and when young teens get hooked early in life, the long-term damage takes effect at young adult age. Due to hooking the youth, these vape companies end up receiving a lifelong customer. This means that more profit is earned from these new consumers, giving vape companies the ability to produce even more flavors. This topic is important to me because people I personally know are becoming addicted to vapes for no reason. I want the city of Livermore to restrict the retail of flavored vape juice because our teenagers are becoming the future of smoking companies and are consuming life-threatening chemicals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahalia Rajesh, Zoe Beaker, Janelle Grayden.
Hello, my name is Ahalia Rajesh. I live in Livermore in a town, Granada High School. I'm involved in the 2P Peer Educators Club as I'm interested in learning more about tobacco and vaping and how they affect our society. I also want to be part of a group that educates parents, students- I also want to be part of a group that educates parents, students, and officials about the dangers of using tobacco products. Flavored tobacco products are popular and appealing to youth. The variety of flavors like mango and cotton candy and colorful packaging encourage young smokers. Tobacco-related diseases are the leading cause of death in the United States. Many users believe that the use of vape products will make them look cool and it will help them fit in in the society. In fact, studies have shown that chronic diseases like cancer, heart disease, and strokes can be a result of vaping and are major causes of death in Alameda County. The best way to prevent these illnesses and deaths is to keep youth from starting to vape. Laws and other enforcement that protect youth from flavored tobacco products are important to prevent a tobacco addiction among youth vaping companies' main target. I ask that our city council take that important step of enacting an ordinance to restrict the sale of flavored vape and tobacco products in our city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe Beaker, Janelle Grayden, Kristi Wang.
Good evening, Livermore City Council members. My name is Zoe Becker, and as a freshman in high school, I have seen that vaping is not only accepted but embraced amongst my peers. High schoolers are attracted to the newest form of vaping, the flavored Juul. These products have a negative impact on student health, and I would like to see a change implemented. Most people are not aware of the dangers behind these small devices. As stated by the makers of the Juul products, one pod has the same amount of nicotine as a 20-pack of cigarettes. According to an NIH 2017 study, nearly 1 in 3 students in 12th grade report past-year use of some kind of vaping device, raising concerns about the impact of their health. In the same NIH study, it was recorded that 51.8% of 12th graders interviewed claimed that all that was in the mist they were breathing was, quote, "just flavoring." Because of the enticing flavors, more teens participate in Juuling, which leads to health problems and addiction. San Francisco took a step in the right direction by creating Proposition E to ban the sale of any flavored tobacco product, including e-cigarettes and vaping devices. This is evidence that people understand the impact these products have on teens who use them. San Francisco and other nearby cities have seen a positive effect from banning the sale of flavored smoking products, and Livermore would benefit from following their lead. Thank you for the consideration of my request.
Thank you. Janelle Grayden, Kristi Wong, and Carol McGruder. McGruder, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. My name is Janelle Grayden. I am a longtime Livermore resident and mother of two high school boys. So why Livermore? I wanted to discuss with you this evening some statistics and some survey results from Livermore-specific. According to the 2017-2018 California Healthy Kids Survey of Livermore Joint Unified School District, 30% of 11th graders responded that they had used e-cigarettes, and 16% responded they were currently using them. 72% of 11th graders believed it was easy to obtain e-cigarettes and vaping devices. 52% of 11th graders believed it is easier to obtain traditional cigarettes. 43% of 11th graders believed e-cigarettes do less harm than traditional cigarettes. 74% of youth obtain their vaping products from a local, physical location. 25% of Livermore's tobacco, the 67 retailers that are currently in Livermore, are within 1,000 foot of a school. Just this month, the American Academy of Pediatrics reported a 78% increase in high schoolers vaping over one-year period, and 48% increase of middle schoolers. 3.6 million school-aged children are now reporting that they're vaping. Those are the ones that are admitting it. So what does this mean? We need to ban flavored products. We need to get them out of our city. 95% of smokers start before the age of 21. Let's not expose our youth to another tobacco 2.0. In fact, just a quick fact, December of this last year, Altera, the makers of Marlboro, invested $12.8 billion into Juul. Adults can buy their products online. Let's protect our children.
Thank you. Kristi Wong, Carol McGruder, Mary Perner.
I'm Kristi Wong, a parent of two high school students in Livermore, one at Livermore High and one at Granada. The FDA has deemed youth vaping to be an epidemic, and I've definitely seen evidence of this in our town. I've heard parents speak of taking away privileges, urine testing their children, and tracking their teens' whereabouts on an app. I've heard teachers struggle with how to deal with the number of students they catch vaping. I've heard school administrators describe eating lunch in the bathroom every day to keep kids from lighting up in there. I've heard coaches grapple with how to run a team when they're expected to suspend multiple athletes for breaking these rules. On February 19th, our school board passed a strong resolution against vaping. Our parents, teachers, administrators, and coaches are doing everything they can, but they're overwhelmed by the size of the problem. There are some who say the problem of youth vaping is a parenting problem. When tobacco companies invest millions of dollars into advertising directly to kids through social media, creating products that are disguised as everyday objects like USB sticks and iPods, enticing youth with more than 15,000 flavors like Jolly Rancher and Gummy Bear, and selling these highly addictive products just down the street from their schools, this is not a parenting problem, it's a public policy problem. We know that adolescent brains are at the peak of addiction, and nicotine is the most addictive substance there is. On February 11th, the Centers for Disease Control released a study showing that for the first time in decades, teen tobacco use rates are no longer on the decline. According to another study by the CDC, if a person hasn't begun smoking by age 18, there's only a 1 in 10 chance that he or she will ever smoke in life. Tobacco companies know this. This is why they're doing everything they can to cultivate the next generation of smokers. With the help of flavored products, they've once again become very successful. We need effective public policy to curb youth vaping, and a strong tobacco retail license is that policy. Currently, 144 communities in California have passed the local TRL ordinance. The successful ones are those with no exceptions, no loopholes. Partial bans don't work. In 30 jurisdictions in our state, many in the Bay Area, strong TRLs have dramatically cut down on teenage access to flavored nicotine. For young people, shutting off access at their local stores takes away their primary means of getting these products. Our superintendent, Kelly Bowers, supports a citywide tobacco retail licensing ordinance to, quote, "prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city of Livermore." I urge our city council to do the most you can to combat youth vaping by passing a complete ban of flavored tobacco products in Livermore. Let's give the youth of Livermore a fighting chance for a lifetime of good health. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McGruder, Mary Perner, Brian Davis.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Carol McGruder, and I'm the co-chairperson, one of two, of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. And we've been working for the past 10 years since the FDA was given the authority to ban menthol. At the time when the Tobacco Control Act was signed, all the other flavors were banned, except for menthol, which is a flavor that was perniciously targeted to African-Americans, so much so that 70, 80% of African-American smokers who smoke, smoke menthol. And we have been waiting for 10 years for the FDA to move. We know that the federal level of our government moves very slowly, and so it's incumbent upon you, cities, to take the control that you have and to get these products out of our communities, including yours. I'm very proud of the young people here tonight. I want them to have long lives, and I want their parents and their grandparents to live, because the effect on children when they prematurely lose their parents and grandparents due to cigarettes and smoking impacts their lives, for all of their lives, if any of you have lost someone, especially when you're young. So I just want to say that one of the things that our city staffer didn't say is, you know, Beverly Hills and the city of San Francisco, they have done total bans on flavors, and that's what we're encouraging you to do. Go big or go home. It's time to end this. The California Department of Public Health has declared that by 2035, we will have a zero smoking prevalence in our great state of California. It's called the end game. We know that the industry never stops. I've been doing this for over 25 years. I used to say that if cigarettes were put on the market today, they would never be legal. But e-cigarettes has proven me wrong. While we were doing whatever we do, our kids are on social media. Juul, you know, San Francisco is the city of innovation and disruption, so Juul has come along, and all of our kids are hooked on Juul, so much so that we have a new verb called Juuling. And I'm sure that that will probably be in the dictionary next year because all the kids know what it is. So we want you to go big, you know, level the playing field for all of the retailers in Livermore by getting rid of these products and leave the unflavored tobacco products, if we must have that. You know, we have to do all that we can whenever we can because we know that the industry never sleeps, it never stops. They just morph, and they're always after our children. They're always trying to keep our children hooked, and our children shouldn't have to run through a minefield to reach adulthood safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Perner, Brian Davis, Amaya Wooding.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I didn't come with a lot of facts and figures. I came with a story. And my story is, well, first of all, my name is Mary Perner, and I've been in Livermore for 30 years. Both of my parents were smokers. They were heavy smokers. And when I was born, I was underweight, which is apparently typical when the mother is smoking during pregnancy. And underweight babies from smoking parents often remain small. I am the smallest person on either side of my family, 5'1". Everybody else is taller. And sometimes we have vascular irregularities as well, and I have a couple. So this is what happens when you have a tobacco addiction that carries on into adulthood, particularly if these sweetened products have that much nicotine. We don't know the result, and the result might be something like me.
But we're glad you're here.
So am I. So the other part of my story is that despite the smoking in the family, as a 12-year-old, I was a typical 12-year-old, and I was influenced by my girlfriends. And we used to go to a store on the corner of Villard Avenue in Milwaukee, and they had vending machines where anybody, really, could buy cigarettes. And so we did, and we experimented. They didn't really agree that much with me, but, and then I started hanging out with someone else, so the peer pressure went away until college. And then there was a sorority, and all of my sorority sisters were smoking, or at least the cool ones. And so I started carrying flavored cigarettes with me, and I was smoking them as well. One day, I met a friend from the sorority, the heaviest smoker there, for lunch. We both pulled out our cigarettes, and she said, you know, you're not turning a good color with this. They didn't really agree with me. And she said, you don't need to do this. You don't need to be smoking cigarettes, and I wish you'd stop. I'm very grateful for her doing that because they really didn't agree with me. But if I had grown up today, if I had the temptation, and I liked candy, if I had all of these sweet and colorful packaging with prices that I could afford, easy access, I wouldn't be able to tell you this story, and I wouldn't be here as a nonsmoker saying this. So please ban these products.
Thank you. Brian Davis, Amaya Wooding, Evan Branning.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Brian Davis, and I'm a member of the Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition. My niece and her two teenage children live in Livermore, so the fact that 30% of 11th graders in Livermore have used e-cigarettes is frightening. I don't want my niece's kids to have to struggle with nicotine addiction. First, I wanted to address a question that the mayor asked earlier. According to the legal experts at Change Lab Solutions, there is no difference between what a charter city and a general law city can do when it comes to the adoption of tobacco control policies such as we are discussing here tonight. Over 140 cities and counties in California have adopted strong tobacco retail licenses, or TRLs, which include the possibility that businesses that sell tobacco to youth could lose that license, which is really important because it's that incentive that makes sure that the owners are cracking down and making sure their clerks are always asking for ID, and require a yearly fee from those tobacco retailers to support enforcement. There is a guideline available, this was touched on by your city attorney, for calculating the fee based on anticipated enforcement costs. Typically, the fee is several hundred dollars a year for each tobacco retailer, and the amount can be adjusted if needed to cover increased costs. 16 of those communities, of those 140 cities and counties, including San Francisco, Oakland, and Alameda, have included a restriction of flavored tobacco products that includes menthol cigarettes. None of these communities have been sued for doing so. Alameda, San Leandro, and other communities have adopted minimum price and minimum pack size requirements for cigars, so that the packs of five cigars for 99 cents won't be out there so easily accessible. We know from over 100 studies that when the price of tobacco goes up, the teen smoking rate goes down. A review of over 30 California cities and counties with strong tobacco retail licenses overwhelmingly demonstrated a decline in the youth's sales rate after adoption, with an average drop of 26%. A tobacco retail license is sustainable, effective, and affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Amaya Wooding, Evan Branning, Brent Seiler.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Amaya Wooding, and I'm here with the Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition, and I wanted to start by saying that a pack of menthols a day throughout his adulthood is why I never met my grandfather. So as we know from research, as Brian alluded to before, young people smoke less when the price of tobacco goes up. That's just economics, right? Elasticity, something like that? I don't know, I did computer science. So one way that cities have tried to raise the price of tobacco products is by implementing minimum pack size for some of them, like cigars. So in 2010, Union City, and in 2014 Hayward, said that cigars had to be sold in packs of at least five. And the unintended consequence of that was that these new five-packs continued to be sold for the price of one. So that is, you know, 99 cents, better bang for your buck. Yeah. So we know that the tobacco industry is aggressively spending to drive down the cost of its products to consumers. So according to the most recent FTC report, Federal Trade Commission report on cigarettes, in 2016, the amount the tobacco industry spent on consumer discounts for cigarettes alone was over $7 billion. And that's enough to have half a billion dollars left over after funding the entire budget of the state of Oklahoma for this year. Just some, you know, social math right there. So what goes along really well with minimum size, therefore, is the minimum price. A minimum price policy undercuts the ability of the predatory tobacco industry to get at kids and other price-sensitive groups. And I do want to mention, other price-sensitive groups also means, you know, residents of lower socioeconomic status who have been targeted by, you know, these really cheap cigar products since way before, you know, Juul became the thing that rich suburbanites were smoking. And so San Leandro, since 2017, has had a minimum price of $7 for its cigars. And New York has a price of $13 minimum for cigarettes. And I also wanted to talk about, as far as enforcement is concerned, that, you know, this can be done as a part of regular compliance checks. You know, you have police going around saying, hey, you know, let's see if this retailer is selling to youth. They can also, at that point, you know, go into the store and say, okay, you know, what are they selling these products for? And if you have sufficient education of retailers and perhaps a delayed implementation, you know, there's really no risk there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Evan Branning, Brent Seiler, Will Taggart.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Thank you very much. It looks like the nine o'clock meeting end time is no longer a thing going forward.
Think they're the possible.
You know, it was nice while it lasted. So my name is Evan Branning, and I'm actually a teacher over in Pleasanton. And I wanted to give a different perspective on this. First of all, I'd like to say that I really do want to thank all of the students who came out today. It's incredibly brave of them to come speak before council. It is a problem in our schools. This is something that I deal with every single day. Since vaping has become more popular over the last few years, I've seen an increased number of number of disruptions in my class. Students are leaving more frequently to go to the bathroom. We know as teachers, we're not dumb. We know why they're going, but unfortunately, there's limits to what we can enforce, whether we can stop them, et cetera. So there is a big issue and this is a health issue for our students. It is an addiction issue for our students. This is a problem targeting them. I'm here to say that we've seen, we've heard many facts, we've heard many very valid reasons why we should be looking at a full and complete ban of flavored tobacco products. And I absolutely support going forward with a full flavor ban. This is the only thing that will be effective. Cities that have tried partial bans have failed. It needs to be a full ban. It needs to be an enforced ban. Please go forward with strong action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Brent Seiler, Will Taggart, Sasha Sato. Coming out from the wings.
Got to get outside and get cooled off a little bit.
You say there's hot air in here? I take exception to that.
I was trying to hold the door open to get some cold air in so it'd cool everybody down. Like Evan mentioned, I mean, for the, the young people to come here from the schools is just incredible. I'm a smoker. I have a Juul. And this has helped me to go from a pack a day to about a pack a week. And I'm working my way off of it by using this. I've tried Chantix, I've tried nicotine patches, I've tried it all. This has helped me. But I'll also tell you this, nicotine is a drug. It is addictive. From my youth through the end of my Marine Corps career, I did not smoke. After I got out, I started smoking and I've been smoking since 1996, about a pack a day. It's ruined my body. So by bringing this up, I think it's an opportune time for the city council to be able to take definitive action and protect our children. The tobacco company won't do it. I still feel it's a community issue, as I mentioned earlier. I think law enforcement has a play in it because if it's illegal for them to buy it, it's illegal for them to smoke it. Getting that information and getting it back to parents, I think is a crucial part of what we need to do as well. As far as things that we can do, city attorney has brought up some very good points of what other people have done, but I'd like to just name a few. A lot of the point-of-sale systems require people to put in your age, your date of birth when you buy cigarettes. I would like to see it go further to where they have to scan the ID card and it would tie both the sale of the purchase to the clerk who did it. And then they would be required to run a monthly report on all the exceptions. It would help reduce the cost of city staff time to figure out who's selling to the underage people. At that point, I would initiate a $50,000 fine right up front. Soon as they do it, $50,000. Second one, you lose your license, period. No exceptions, no get out of jail free card. These fines could go to help support ongoing information campaign to educate the minors on the negative effects of tobacco and vaping. Having a strong punitive damages would send a very clear message to retailers that selling to minors is not going to be tolerated. But at the same time, it gives those who are of legal age, who wants to make a life choice, they can make that life choice. So I stand with the many people who've stood up here and say, please eliminate this from our children.
Thank you, Mr. Seiler. Will Taggart, Sasha Soto, Adriana Del Cid.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and City Staff. My name is Will Taggart and I'm a freshman at Granada High School. I'm involved in the Peer Health Educators, a group, a club that is working to stop youth from vaping. I'm here today to talk to you about how you can help. The sweetness of flavored vaping and tobacco products, it's designed to hook kids and keep them coming back for more. Research shows that 81% of youth tobacco users initiated with flavored tobacco product. Once these kids start with flavors, they get addicted and keep on using them because the flavor is masking the harsh taste of the tobacco. This addiction will eventually lead to a tobacco-related death, one of over 480,000 in the U.S. annually. This is more than HIV, illegal drug use, alcohol use, car accidents, suicides and murders combined. The best way to prevent tobacco-related illness and death is to keep youth from starting it in the first place. You can help save countless lives by enacting a local policy to regulate the sale of flavored vaping products. This would make it harder for kids to get hooked on flavors, forcing them to lead a healthier vape-free lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Sasha Soto, Adriana Del Cid, Hillary Kajongian. Sasha Soto, Sato, I'm sorry. Sasha Sato.
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 Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. My name is Sasha Sato. I am a student at Granada High School and a citizen of Livermore. And I'm here to advocate that the city regulate or ban the sale of flavored tobacco products within city limits. We all need to recognize that flavored tobacco companies are marketing to teenagers, or if they're not marketing to teenagers, that these products are being consumed disproportionately by teenagers. That teenagers' developing brains are especially susceptible to addiction. That flavored tobacco products contain the addictive chemical nicotine. That statistics show that Juul pods and other brands of vape products can be more potent than cigarettes. And that we have an imperative to prevent an increase in the population of teen smokers. Once we recognize the existence of the, of this issue, we must act upon it. I speak today to support city measures to regulate and/or ban sale of flavored tobacco products because I believe that preventing teenagers' purchase of these products in this city will be an effective method of reducing the population of teen smokers. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Del Cid, Hillary Kajongian and Rosalyn Moya.
Good evening. My name is Adriana Del Cid and I am a student at Los Pacitas College, participating in the Apichat internship where students like me are working alongside companies like Bay Area Community Resources to advocate for 100% smoke-free policies in community colleges. Students that I know and have observed using tobacco products are primarily using either fruit or candy-flavored products, such as Sour Patch Kid flavors. Most students do not think voting can lead to health problem, I'm sorry, do not think that vaping can lead to health problems and primarily use these products because they taste good. One way that I believe students will be less likely to purchase and use these products is to have flavored tobacco sales prohibited altogether in this city. Awareness and research regarding the harmful effects of vaping is definitely important and should also be increased. But if flavored tobacco product sales are eliminated, these products will become less appealing to become, to begin with for students who are either curious or already using tobacco products. Seeing students vaping and smoking tobacco products on a regular basis on my campus is an important issue that I think, that I think should be addressed primarily for the health of these students and anyone exposed to secondhand smoke. But also to better prepare students to transfer either to four-year institutions or other workplaces where they will be likely expected to abide to 100% smoke-free policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Kajongian, I apologize if I butchered your name, Rosalyn Moya and Nathan Subermanian.
If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more and become more, you are a leader. This quote has, speaks for itself and has inspired me to take a stand against the use of vaping products in Livermore schools and the selling of vaping products to minors. My name is Hillary Kajongian and I'm a resident of Livermore, studying nutrition at Los Pacitas College. I am also a member of the organization called Apichat, which is campaigning for a smoke-free, tobacco-free community college campus. A tobacco-free, smoke-free college campus is vital for students' health. Vaping continues to gain popularity and affects both those who choose to smoke it and their peers around them. I currently have a brother in 10th grade who doesn't smoke. Why? Because he has asthma. Every day he walks in the quiet halls and goes to the bathroom and fears that vaping smoke will drift and he will start coughing. According to California's Prop 65 list of chemicals, e-cigarette aerosol contains at least 10 chemicals on California's Prop 65 list of chemicals known to cause cancer, birth defects and other reproductive harm. Smoking e-cigarettes harms both the individual who smokes it and those around them who don't have the choice. The chemicals exhaled from these products are not just water vapor. They contain several substances that can have many detrimental short and long-term effects on one's health. Vaping is a problem in college, high school and middle school students. If you care for your child's well-being and health at school, take into consideration of the chemical fumes that are exhaled around campus every day. My brother doesn't want these chemicals to harm him and your child shouldn't either.
Thank you. Rosalyn Moya, Nathan Subermanian, La Mary Rodriguez.
My name is Rosalyn and I'm with Bay Area Community Resources as well as the Apichat Project. Tobacco retail licenses only charge fees for the cost of enforcing the policy. It is cost-recovery and sustainable every year. TRLs are effective at enforcing tobacco control policies. It gives local jurisdictions the capacity to enforce and educate on tobacco control laws. And also tobacco retail licenses are enforceable. 144 jurisdictions have passed tobacco retail licenses and 30 cities and counties of which now include candy-flavored bans, including menthol, many of which are similar to the model policy that you, that our city attorney had mentioned today. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Subermanian, La Mary Rodriguez.
Good evening, Livermore City Council members. My name is Nathan Subermanian and I'm speaking on behalf of the Alameda County Tobacco Control Program. And I'd like to offer some additional information regarding how pricing and packet size of tobacco products contributes to consumption among youth. Youth and young adults are considered price-sensitive customers, meaning that they primarily have access to products that fall below a certain price point. Research shows that there's a strong correlation between lower prices and higher consumption rates among price-sensitive populations. According to the Center for Disease Control, a 20% increase in per-unit price of tobacco results in an 8.6% reduction in youth initiation. Pricing strategies such as promotions, discounts and coupons serve as pro-tobacco advertising as well, inviting new users to try products at a low cost. Individually wrapped and small packaged tobacco products also serve as advertising as they typically have their low price clearly visible on colorful wrappers right behind the checkout counter. Single cigars and cigarrillos fall outside of the pack size flavor regulation and taxes imposed on traditional cigarettes, making them accessible and enticing to young people. Such products are easy to conceal from parents and are conveniently transported to school and exchanged among youth. In Alameda County, 77% of tobacco retailers near schools sell little cigars for less than a dollar. A strong comprehensive tobacco retail license will always establish a minimum price and pack size. While the price floor makes harmful products less accessible for price-sensitive populations, raising the minimum pack size reduces impulse trials and initiation. I hope that the city council has found this information to be pertinent and will not hesitate to contact Alameda County Public Health, Ray Education and Technical Assistance as you move through this process.
Thank you. La Mary Rodriguez, Esther Ann Walts.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lee Mairey Rodriguez and I am here on behalf of the Alameda County Public Health Department's Tobacco Control Program. And I'm going to share a little bit of information regarding youth access to tobacco products. As previously mentioned, according to the California Healthy Kids Survey, 72% of Livermore 11th graders believe it's very or fairly easy to obtain electronic cigarettes. And 52% believe it's very or fairly easy to obtain cigarettes. To me, this is no surprise, given that more than 50% of tobacco retailers in the city are close in proximity to schools. This is alarming because as many of y'all are aware, there is a direct causal relationship between youth seeing tobacco marketing, youth trying tobacco products and ultimately progressing to regular use. Most tobacco marketing occurs in a retail environment where the number of stores, store location and store type selling and marketing tobacco products each independently influence youth tobacco use. Tobacco companies recruit youth to replace those who quit smoking or die from its effects. This means that the lives of youth are at stake and also that the tobacco industry has no intention of losing the control they currently hold over them. Fortunately, local tobacco retailer licensing has proven effective at reducing illegal tobacco sales to minors. It is a powerful tool for cities to shape their retail environment, to reflect community values and impede tobacco industry control. Policy solutions such as placing a cap on the number of retailers and prohibiting retailers from locating near schools and youth-sensitive areas can protect youth and uplift equity in the city. I look forward to seeing Livermore City Council take the necessary steps in order to protect the youth in your city. They deserve a fair chance at success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And finally, Esther Ann Walts.
Evening, Mayor and City Council and Staff. In, I've been hearing a lot about the licenses and stuff and requiring retailers to get a license to sell the tobacco. But I don't care if it's flavored or not, I would like for, if you're going to license the retailers to sell, they need to go through similar requirements to apply for the license that businesses, when they apply for a license to sell alcoholic beverages, that they are put through the similar requirements. Plus, that will also make them more cognitive of whom they sell to. And at DMBA, they should put your, your birth in border numbers so that when people apply for that, the retailers can see that. And if you're below a certain age, you won't be sold any tobacco product. And also, we need a way of, people who'd volunteer to help law enforcement with the undercover thing to nab people and give them their consequences for selling to a person under a certain age. Because what I have learned, tobacco is a narrow toxin.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last card that I have, so I'm going to close the public comment period. Justice Mayor, what?
Yeah, I'd like to start and I want to really thank everyone for this tremendous amount of information, especially the students for showing up here. All the information, I think, was very compelling and delivered concisely and clearly. So it was great. So given that, I'm convinced, and I would come to the point of view of we do as much as we can here to ban it. So I'm in favor of the full, you know, full modi, I guess, on this. But the, and now I, I did catch this thing about whether it's a, are there any differences between the charter and common law? And I understand we may need to understand that in more detail, but whatever we can do under our governance processes, I think we should do. And in particular, I had, you know, earlier I was asking about the grandfathering. And, and what occurred to me, and I'm, I'm glad Mr. Seiler mentioned it as well, is that can we, in the sunsetting provisions, if someone violates the law and sells to a minor, can we sunset them faster? So I would, that, I mean, I don't know if the answer is, but you know, as we, as you think about crafting the legislation, that's one of the things I'm thinking about. And then I also agree that whatever the maximum penalties we can impose, we should do that because it's just horrible that these people are marketing drug delivery systems to the
Let me take a shot at this. I spent my career as a water quality chemist and I spent that career chasing parts per billion of toxic compounds in, in water, parts per billion. And these vaping devices are drug delivery systems. And these are milligrams per mil. Now, I know that's a little bit wonky, but that's the world in which I live. But yeah, it's, it's thousands of times more concentrated. And in the drinking water industry, we were chasing theoretical cancers in, in a 70-year lifespan. And as was pointed out by members of the peer group today, almost a half a million people die from, from tobacco products. So this isn't theoretical, they die. And, and I certainly want to appreciate the, the folks in the peer group that came out tonight. Thank you very much for taking the time and for becoming so, that's fine, yeah, you're good, you're good. For, you know, bringing so much information. Loved the posters that you guys did, the posters that you had. Loved the posters that you guys did, the posters that you had, the, all the information, the letters. We read those. We sincerely appreciate the level of concern, that commitment, the passion that you brought to this. I remember years ago seeing a print ad from Jac- Jack Webb. Remember him? Dragnet, Just the Fax Ma'am? It was a print ad from 1958, and it said, it had Jack Webb holding a cigarette, and he said, "Just what the doctor ordered." Just what the doctor ordered, because the menthol made it easier to smoke. It soothed that natural irritation that they had. So what I find particularly troubling about this is that this is specifically a very carefully manufactured, very efficient drug-delivery system designed for children. And I was out walking Gatsby a while back, and one of my neighbors came up and was very concerned about this, and she showed me a package of nicotine e-liquid, and it had three places on the label, zero nicotine. Three places, zero nicotine. You turn over the back, first ingredient, nicotine. Excuse me. I may not be stupid, but, but I was really struck by that. These are specifically targeted for children, and that is wrong. And I will admit, I was kind of a slow fuse on this one, but the more I learned, and thank you from the peer group for bringing me up to speed on this, the more angry I got, and that we really need to take action on this, because this is addictive. I remember years ago, you could buy cigarettes for thirty-five cents a pack. Shows you how old I am. But thirty-five cents a pack. And I remember talking to people, and they'd say, "Yeah, when cigarettes reach a dollar, I'm going to quit." I was at the gas station at the day, ten bucks, ten bucks for a pack of cigarettes. Yes, it's breathtaking, but you know what? People are still smoking. But what does that tell you? It tells you just how addictive these products are. Tobacco and these e-juices are specifically designed to be addictive. They manipulated the nicotine levels in cigarettes specifically to make them more addictive. You can buy these e-juices specifically for higher concentrations of nicotine, because once you get addicted to it, this is an upper, it really is. And it's, I'm glad I never started. So we need to take action on this, and I absolutely agree with what we heard tonight, and how we can best regulate this. Education is going to be very important, because we've heard that it is banned at the high schools, but it's still being used at the high schools. So it's going to be a combination of limiting access to it, a tremendous education, because as we've heard from the peer group, a lot of people, it's their perception that it's not harmful. It's addictive. And as a chemist, it operates at the architecture upon which your intellect is built. It's a chemical level. All those neural transmissions, it's all chemistry. And this operates at a chemical level. So you may intellectually think you can beat this stuff, but anybody that's been addicted to cigarettes, addicted to nicotine, knows that all that intellect stuff goes out the window. This is a chemical dependence. And so whatever we can do, I wholeheartedly endorse banning the flavored e-liquids, e-liquids altogether, the nicotine products, the flavored tobaccos. Absolutely. I support however we can ban those. The, and that's going to, of course, come down to the legal part of it. I was interested to hear that there is a difference, or there is no difference between charter cities and general law cities. I'll leave that to the legal team to work that out. But again, I certainly appreciate all of the tremendous input we've had tonight, and I certainly agree with you.
Trish Monroe, Councilmember Monroe.
Hi. So I've got nothing to disagree with, but I'll add a couple of things, because I can. First of all, I was struck by the fact that I've gotten absolute, I've gotten tons of letters, and as have we all, I appreciate all of the information. What's really interesting is that there has been absolutely nothing from anyone saying, "Oh, this is a good idea. We should allow this." Nothing, nothing saying, "Oh, adults should be allowed to do this." So it is striking that this is being done by a group of people who know what they're doing is disgusting, it's depraved, it's deceitful, and they are basically murdering people, children, very slowly. Yeah, I think whatever we can do would be a fine idea to stop this. I appreciate what everybody has said about this. First time I was aware this was a problem was actually at the candidates' forum back in October. I thought we'd licked this back when I was a young adult. I'm really sorry we haven't. It says something about the nature of the company that they're taking this tack. So whatever we can do going forward in terms legally, whatever we can do towards making it possible for the, you know, through licensing, to make sure that the costs fall on those who are selling these products, I think is a fine idea. I really like the idea. This is a great little piece of information. To help a persistent cough, go to aisle eight. To get a persistent cough, go to aisle fourteen. Guess what's sold on aisle fourteen? I think that is not, one does wonder why pharmacies would have cigarettes. I wanted to focus on one other piece, which is the information campaign, and I had a couple of questions about that. First of all, is it possible getting the word out that, as you said, mayor, you know, these companies are putting lies and doing it legally on their, on their packages? How can we, as strongly as possible, place, well, these are lies, posters, or whatever, in places? How can we, as a community, create a culture of point, of making the lies transparent? And how can we make as much of that information campaign fall on the shoulders of those who are selling this and who are producing these as possible? I guess those would be my questions. Yeah.
Councilmember Monroe brings up an interesting point. I think this is the first public hearing that I have participated with, that not a single person spoke on the other side of it. You know, normally we get, you know, like a couple people, but I didn't get one response, not one person has spoken in favor of vaping or tobacco products. So I think that's a first, that this has been absolutely unanimous. Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I think I was going to make the same.
Thanks, Mayor Carling. I'll get it right.
It's okay. You have nine more months to get it right, I guess.
Yeah, I'll get there.
I was going to make the same comment. It's rare we get people on the same page speaking to us, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the folks that have come out tonight, and I see the superintendent of schools here tonight, too, so I appreciate that she's here. And I do think that this is a three-pronged problem that, between the school district, who obviously is trying to force their own rules in the schools, and I recognize the difficulty with doing that. We have some teachers that have represented that challenge here tonight, so I appreciate them bringing that to our attention. I appreciate the superintendent being here and participating and listening to us and the information we've received from her, and of course, all the students and the parents as well. So there were some parents here tonight. I do take, and I'm not sure that this person really meant it this way, but I think you have to be careful with your words, that they were looking for some public policy that was going to curb teen vaping. Whatever we do today is not going to stop kids from vaping. It's going to make the ease with which they get the vaping tools, I suppose, make it more challenging for them, but they can, they're going to be able to go someplace else and get it. So I hope everybody recognizes that if we pass something to ban these things in the city of Livermore, this is not going to completely curb teen vaping. It's going to take a community involvement of not just what we, as city legislators can do, but it's also going to take parent responsibility and the school district, too, working all together to try and keep this to a minimum. But you know as well as I do that, when I was in high school, kids were smoking, and, you know, it became a habit, a lousy habit. And so people are always going to be able to get the materials. One of the, I guess I have a couple of questions also, is do we? So one of the things that you've asked us to do, in addition to the information campaign, which I support, and I do support the banning of these materials, including the menthol cigarettes. I mean, that hasn't been specifically mentioned, I don't think, from the dais, but I do, I have recognized that Ms. McGruder talked about menthol targeting African-Americans, and I've read that several different pieces of information over the course of the last few weeks, that that's been something that African-American community has been fighting for a long time, is the target of that community with menthol cigarettes. And I, somebody else included mint. I didn't know that was a flavored cigarette, but I guess I support that as well. But I do have a question about, do we have to require a license for tobacco retailers to ban these? Do you have to have a license in order for us to ban it? Or can we just ban it without requiring a license?
My recommendation, if you were to pursue this course of action, looks like we're going there, is to require the tobacco retailer license, the TRL you heard today.
Right.
And that would actually address one of the issues raised by Councilmember Warner, which is if you have a grandfathered use and they have a tobacco retailer license, you must have that in order to sell tobacco, and you prohibit all vaping. If they violate that, they sell to a minor, you can then revoke that license, and then that operation ceases.
Okay, so your suggestion is that if we're going to go down this path, the TRL would be recommended.
Yes, sir.
Well, okay. Well, that helps me. I am a little concerned, though, you mentioned in some of the materials that it is tough to enforce, and I just, are we going to expect that we're going to collect enough revenue from these licenses to, what, hire another officer or something whose full-time job is to go around and check? I guess I'm looking for some understanding of how that enforcement's going to work.
Correct. So that will be part of our report back. If we receive the direction to draft and prepare an ordinance, when we return, we will have coordinated with our neighbor Preservation Division, as well as our police department, to determine who would be in charge of enforcing these particular regulations, and what that cost would look like, or what we anticipate that would look like. We can actually recover some of that through the licensing fees, as well as some of the penalties. I'm not sure fifty thousand dollars would be within the realm, but there would be opportunities as well.
Okay, then, nowhere in the staff recommendations does it talk about minimum price and so on, and that was brought up by a few. So is that, that's not included at this point in your recommendation? I know that was brought forth on your table, but it's not, it's not in the, the couple of recommended actions that you had in the memo.
So what we have before you today is just a request for direction from you. If the city council does want to pursue regulations for minimum pack sizes, in particular, some of the sizes and prices, we can explore that. One of the issues that was raised today at the lectern was the single sale of low-cost cigarettes and cigarrillos. In other communities, those are called Lucy's. We can address those. I think that's something we can look into.
But are those low costs, I'll ask somebody that spoke to us tonight, are those low costs, maybe from the Tobacco Control Program, somebody? I mean, are those, yeah, Mr. Subermanian, are those, those cheap ones that you spoke about, are they flavored?
Yeah, most flavored.
So if we banned flavored tobacco, it would essentially reduce those ninety-nine cent things that you were talking about?
I mean, it could, but they're still available unflavored, and it's still easily accessible product for a present population, I think.
But, okay, but there's, but still, the, there's still an age requirement to buy tobacco products, right? Right?
Yes.
Yes, I understand the enforcement may be an issue, but there is a, there is a minimum age, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm finished for the moment.
I'd just like to add is that what I meant at the beginning is every suggestion that I heard here, I'm in favor of staff exploring as to whether we can do it. And it's also my understanding of having spoken with everybody, is that the tobacco retail license is at the heart of this, and that that's what the other cities have done. So I think that is what we're really talking about, is having that license and making all of the associated provisions around it as strong as possible.
Well, that, the licensing provides a mechanism for the funding to enable us to do the other things. So just to.
Well, not just the funding, but it's this enforcement.
Right, enforcement, but that allows us the funding to conduct the enforcement program, and would that also include, for example, a decoy program, so that we can ensure that there is compliance?
And that's a traditional program that our police department runs to deal with underage sales, or decoys. Your staff wanted to, go ahead.
Just one thing, and I forgot to mention, is that the decoy program could be a traditional one, but the last one was a decade ago. So I think that shows where we've been remiss here.
It also shows the funding.
Well, it's a funding issue, I mean, it coincides with the downturn and everything else, but we haven't had, it doesn't sound like, meaningful enforcement of the rules we already have for a while, and so it's very important that we begin to do that.
So just to recap a little bit, the tobacco licensing, or the tobacco retail license would be part of the, would you come back with, no sales in pharmacies? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about that. Suppose they have a pharmacy in Lucky? What, I mean, is that, is that a pharmacy or a grocery store?
It's under the same roof.
What's your pleasure on that?
See, it's not quite as easy as everybody thought.
Well, it is. It is easy if you want to step up to it, and so I'd say it's defined as a pharmacy.
So if you'd like to define that as a pharmacy, we can look, look towards that and see if we can work that into our ordinance.
Also, the thousand-foot radius from the sensitive receptors, and, let's see, prohibiting vaping products, prohibiting flavored tobaccos, all as part of the tobacco retail.
All vaping products or flavored vaping products?
Pardon me?
All vaping products or flavored vaping products?
I would say all vaping products, because we have the opportu, we can do it now. Now's the opportunity to do that. And because, as we pointed out, if somebody wants to buy it online and have it delivered at an Amazon locker, there's nothing we can do about that. But the thousand-foot radius and the, but the flavored tobaccos, I guess that would also go into the flavored chewing tobaccos, the, because there's mint-flavored snooze.
So if you're going to prohibit flavored tobacco, the way tobacco and tobacco products are defined in California, that would not only be the juices, tobacco itself, which you can't do as far as the tobacco, that's banned by federal law, but it also include gummies and anything else?
Candies.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And the prohibiting vaping products and the flavored tobaccos.
All right.
Yes. Councilmember.
I'm just curious about the licensing again. The way I understood you to say it, or the way I understood it to be explained, is that as long as you are, as long as the licensing fee goes to enforcement, you basically skies the limit. Is that, no, that's not right. Okay.
No, our licensing fee has to be based upon the service that's provided, so that'll be the staff time required to receive, vet, process, and issue a license, as well as to, again, go for and make sure we're monitoring for compliance.
Monitoring for?
For compliance. For compliance.
Well, isn't the compliance enforcement?
It is. So this is for going out there and making sure, are you not sending minors? Are you not violating our ordinance? Correct. So the sky's not the limit, but there is, but, but we have to, we have to actually go through the fee study for that.
There we go.
Okay, so the sky's not the limit, but, but we could get fairly high?
You could get fairly high on your cost recovery of including an enforcement program as part of that cost recovery.
Well, I think there's also some reasonable test limits on the actual fines, right, as well, or not?
We will explore what our opportunities are for fines. Right now, the government code sets what a fine is for an infraction. That is possible. I think your strongest remedy in this situation would be to revoke the license.
Right.
So could you review for people that are here, the process that we now are embarking on?
Well, we wanted to go through just a couple of other items. The list was at least-
There was the, there was the issue of the one per 2,500 population, but as I understand, that was more problematic because of the, we have 67 retailers, so that would be-
So the question is whether you wish us to explore that, and what would be the process to ultimately getting down to your target amount if you wanted that, and what your options are, whether you wanted that as a goal statement rather than a regulation. There's a variety of, whether it would limit new retailers and not apply to existing retailers. So the question would be, do you want further exploration of that particular issue?
My sense would be if we had the one per thousand, or if we had nothing within 1,000 feet of parks and schools, and if you eliminate the pharmacies, that could, that could whittle off a few of those, and get us maybe down closer.
Well, I think, I think what we've got, though, is ultimately, we've got more of these things than we need in any kind of sense, and we're going to have to talk about sunsetting. So I would, at this stage, I would just assume they'd tell us what we can do.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Warner.
Great, okay.
There were two other, or three other areas, minimum price and minimum package size. Was that an item you wished us to examine as well?
You got one head here wanting?
No, I don't, I don't care about that.
I think if we make it difficult enough to, to get this, what's the pleasure of the council?
I would like to understand the minimum, the two minimums together.
Most of those are flavored. That's the other thing, is that those cigarello, cigarellos that you see, that somebody, hold that pack up again? Yeah. I saw it in the back there. Yeah, the cigarellos, yeah, those are all flavored tobacco products.
So I have two?
No, I understand.
Yes, I think it would be covered under that.
It's a, it's a different angle. So the question is whether you wish us to pursue that independently of the other bans we're talking about.
How much effort, how much time, staff time would that take?
I think it is.
However much.
If you want us to look at it, we can look at that and report back to you.
Okay, okay.
And then the final item had to do with concepts of scanning IDs, having logs, other items relate, that there were examples.
Oh, like the pseudo fedrin? I hadn't, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that.
It sounds to me as part of the enforcement, I mean, this is not, we're not trying to make it easy to sell this stuff, right? So I, if, what I, I guess where I'm at at this stage is, we've heard a lot of ideas that are potentially good. It's, we're not going to be able to decide with the information we have at this moment, one way or the other. I'm in favor of getting the information and exploring it, so we can make a fully informed decision.
Yeah, requiring the ID, I said if they require that for pseudo fedrin, then sure. Two, so we got two or three?
Three.
Okay, looks like you got three.
I mean, that was why I was asking about the process, just so everybody was clear that this doesn't, this is not a fait accompli at this point, right?
I wanted to say one more thing that we have, I think was on the list at some point, and that is the school district has a very nice proclamation stating their values and their, their position on this as part of the information. It would be nice to either sign on to that or have a parallel. Would that, that make sense?
Yeah, but I think the, what we're talking about enacting is a pretty strong message.
Yeah, I think.
Doesn't have to be either or.
I agree, we'll do, we can do both.
Okay, all right, you got three.
So very good. So the process from this point forward, we've received your direction. We'll then embark on the process of preparing an ordinance to return to you. The ordinance is, as you know, is a two-step process. One meeting to introduce the ordinance and receive public comment, and a second meeting to adopt the ordinance, and that will take effect 30 days after that. So we'll be in the process of preparing that. We also have an opportunity to meet with the Intergovernmental Committee, as we discussed. I think we're meeting with them on March 21st. We'll relay what happened here tonight to that group, and see if there's other opportunities to partner with them with regard to information and for a campaign.
So how, how do the businesses that now are in the business of selling these products, how do they get informed of this process and what's likely to happen and?
So we, we can, that'll be, can be part of our information outreach. Several times and then several occasions, when the city does adopt regulations, it will reach out to the affected parties. For example, if you're adopting new zoning ordinance, you would talk with your building community. If that's the pleasure of the council, we can reach out to those tobacco retailers now and let them know that this is coming.
It'd probably be worth giving them a heads up at this point, I would guess. I mean, I don't think anybody's here representing those people.
Right.
That's where the other, other letters are coming from.
Yeah, I should, I'll reach the staff, reach out to them as well. Okay. Do you have sufficient direction to bring back an ordinance for our consideration?
We do.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for all of your great comments, and we're going to come back with an ordinance, and we'll, we'll talk with you folks again. Great, thank you. I'll take a five-minute break. Okay. We're going to take a quick five-minute break here. Be back soon. Good evening, and welcome back to Part Two of the March 11th meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're, we just got through the vaping and flavored tobacco, 6.01, moving on to 6.02, which is the Affordable Home Ownership Program Guidelines. We have Fran Reisner and Eric Uranga presenting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have a staff presentation. Good evening, Mayor Marshand and City Council members. Tonight, for your consideration and discussion, is a review of the city's Affordable Home Ownership Program Guidelines. City Council requested a review of the guidelines at the February 12, 2018 City Council meeting. Staff is preparing to conduct a new selection process for homes sold this year, and seeks council's approval at this time. These guidelines pertain to below-market rate homes in new residential developments, which are sold at restricted prices through the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. These homes are affordable for low and moderate income households. For example, a three-bedroom home would be priced at around $282,000 for a low-income household, and $423,000 for a moderate-income household. The city first established criteria for selling the below-market rate homes in 2001, which have been updated and refined by staff over the past 18 years. The guidelines were last reviewed by City Council in 2012. At that time, the selection preference for city employees was removed, and preferences for veterans and persons with disabilities were added. Hundreds of applicants have been screened by these criteria over the years, and the program has assisted over 150 first-time homebuyers. Many of them include Livermore schoolteachers, as you know. So the current guidelines, the current guidelines have been developed with the purpose of being fair, objective, consistent, and clear to interpret and administer. Livermore has a high-demand housing market, and has many more applicants than available units. The priority has been to target homes to those who are financially prepared but have limited assets and advantages. Staff has also aimed to reduce monitoring costs for the city by refining the guidelines to ensure that buyers are creditworthy and are prepared for the responsibilities of homeownership. Each jurisdiction uses its own individual discretion in creating definitions and rules. However, in comparison, Livermore's program is very similar to Dublin and Pleasanton's BMR programs. Livermore has also tailored its guidelines so that approved BMR homebuyers are able to access other public sources of first- and second-mortgage financing through the state and other lenders. One of the previous discussion points was around the definition of a first-time homebuyer. The current definition was part of the guidelines reviewed by council in 2012. First-time homebuyer is defined as an individual who has not previously owned a home, nor had an interest in any improved real property within the past three years. The definition is intended to be clear and objective in its interpretation. It intentionally does not include persons who have had the recent benefit of owning residential property for any purposes. The definition is comparable to other cities in the region. It does not preclude individuals from accessing other HCD and CalHFA mortgage assistance programs. Finally, after three years of not owning a home, a person would be considered a first-time homebuyer once again. Expanding the definition of eligible applicants under this criterion would increase the time required to qualify individuals in the program and increase administration costs. The city has held selection processes for below-market rate units every year since 2014, when the Must Build Ordinance was reinstituted. Two developments will provide BMR units through agreements with the city over the next couple of years, with others expected in the future. In 2018, the city received 765 pre-applications to the lottery process. Hello Housing, the city's program administrator, processed through 514 applicants to find buyers for the 18 homes available. Many individuals are not qualified for various reasons, and those who aren't able to purchase are referred to agencies to counsel and prepare them for the future. The screening process is time-intensive, and the high volume of applicants has increased program costs. The city pays for screening whether or not an applicant is qualified. Staff recommends implementing a new application fee in an attempt to reduce the number of unqualified applications and recover some costs to the city. Under the proposed changes, applicants would still be able to submit a pre-application to get into the lottery process at no cost. However, if they are selected to be screened for a home, the applicant would pay a processing fee of $125. This reflects 10% of the actual cost paid by the city. Other cities have had success in reducing the number of unqualified applications by charging a fee. In addition, a loan closing fee of $400 would be charged to homebuyers as a closing cost for every below-market rate or down payment assistance loan. As proposed, the city would also pass through fees to existing BMR homeowners who choose to refinance or resell their homes. If approved, these fees would charge, be charged, beginning with the new lottery process. So staff recommends city council adopt a resolution approving the city's home ownership, affordable homeownership guidelines, which includes the new fees for application screening, loan processing, refinance, and resale. Staff recommends city council also approve the city manager or his designee to make minor changes and updates to the guidelines in the future for clarification. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Questions at this point? Question? That's astonishing. The 18, 18, 514 applications for 18 units. That's a, thank you. Okay, if there's no questions, I do have a request for comment card from Charlene Sandy, 6.02. Ms. Sandy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council, and staff. My name is Charlene Sandy, and I am currently a tenant in the Station Square units that are going up for sale. And I had currently recently learned that the units that they were putting for sale were going to go at $665,000 to seven, I'm sorry, to $675,000. Myself, along with the other tenants that are currently in this situation, are under the Home Affordable Program. And I'm just having, you know, just really wanted to try to get down to the bottom of how we actually came to this number for these units. That seems like a hefty, a hefty figure to be offering to a Home Affordable, a person in the program. Last year at this time, we talked about offering these units to the folks in the Home Affordable Program in the mid-400s. So, you know, I'm a little concerned about how we jumped up $225,000 in just a year. I did ask about how we came to this number, and the answer was that through an appraisal. So, you know, I have some questions in regards to how detailed was this appraisal, because I, I know several real estate agents, and none of which came to those figures. In fact, if they did just a drive-by on the outside, you know, it probably certainly wouldn't have come that, come in that high. And if it would have been on the, an inside appraisal, that probably had to be one heck of an upgraded unit. These units, as far as I know, have been renting for over 11 years. I know five years ago at the time that I rented my unit, that there were, you know, some, you know, some concerns that I had, you know, some upgrades that really needed to be done. So none of, there hasn't been any upgrades in the units. So this 665 and 675 is, this is higher than full retail. So that, that's primarily, you know, my concern. I did a little bit of the research, and the most recent comp that has come in is $630,000 for the largest unit, which is three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath. So again, not really quite sure where we arrived at 665 and 675, and not quite sure how somebody in the Home Affordable Program would be able to afford that. I know that we've had to provide all of our incomes to the city of Livermore, so I know that it wouldn't be that hard to figure out potentially what some of those mortgages would come in at. Personally, I went in last week and had them run the numbers with what my numbers would be, and where my rent is currently at $2,300, that would put me at just over $4,000 mortgage. So, you know, I'm a single mom with one income and two, two kids in college, and, you know, I love Livermore. I would love to stay here. I'd love, you know, this, this town, and I would do anything I could to try and make this work. I'm just hoping that perhaps we can come in at a more reasonable, home-affordable offer, you know, kind of like what we were talking about last year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Although, is that more closely related to 6.03?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Six point, so we'll hold that thought, because that was actually 6.03. We're on 6.02, talking about the entire program with regards to the, the actual first-time homebuyer program. Okay, hang on a second here. Okay, so with that, having no additional cards for 6.02, I'll close the public comment period, and bring it back to the council questions or comments.
I just have a clarification question for either Ms. Reisner or Mr. Uranga, and that's on the point system. So the teacher gets two points, I get that. Emergency responder gets two points, resident gets two points, work in the city, you get two points. So if I'm a teacher in the city, do I get four points?
Yes, you do. The teacher would get two points for being a teacher, two points for working in Livermore, and two points for, and if they happen to be a resident of Livermore.
That'd be six.
Additional two points as well.
Might be, might be beneficial to clarify that, just to make sure that they get the full number of points that are available. I'm okay with what, yeah, I'm okay with the, with what you're suggesting, so. I'll move, we accept the recommendation of 6.02.
Any other questions at this point? Councilmember Monroe?
I'm okay with it as well.
Okay, so-
Well, I'll second the motion.
Just out of curiosity, how long do the units stay affordable? The units stay affordable for 55 years. 55 years, okay. Because I know that some agencies around us are as little as five years. So there is, I mean, you really hit the jackpot if you get one of those, but it's-
So we also want to be clear that on the ownership programs, that they're secured by a second mortgage, so that if you do sell the unit in five years to a non-qualifying homeowner at full market, you pay back that difference between that initial sales price of a market-rate unit and your much lower affordable unit. So that's not a windfall that goes to the individual homeowner, although the homeownership itself is somewhat of a windfall. That price differential is not. It's put back into the program and then recycled. It's put back into the program and then recycled into some of the projects that we have actually going up right now, like Chestnut.
Very good, yes. So, but it's 55 years for affordability. And I know that years ago, we had a, well, there was the Inclusionary Program, where literally somebody would hit the jackpot, you'd end up buying an $800,000 house for a fraction of that. But, so, to revisit that and make sure that, because there is a real housing crisis right now, to find a way to maximize the number of units that we can get people housed into, rather than have, you know, one or two people just really hit the jackpot. And, so how do we best make that, to provide as many units as possible? And it sounds like you guys are already working on that.
Yes.
Terrific, excellent, thank you. So, with respect to the Affordable Program Guidelines, moved by Vice Mayor Carling, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Exposed. That passed unanimously. Onto 6.03, and this is the Station Square. This is the disposition of city-owned residential units in the Station Square Development.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council members. Yes, for your consideration tonight is the disposition of those units. The city purchased five, these five-townhouse units in the Station Square Development in 2008. It's located, a project located downtown. The units all have three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, with two-car garages, and the unit plans are a little over 1,700 square feet. The purchase was made as, by the city, as housing prices started to soften. The intent of the program was to sell the units to middle-income workers in Livermore at market price, with the city to provide 20% of the purchase price in down payment assistance. And the city used state and local housing funds to buy the units. Shortly after the purchase, the, there was a rapid decline in housing prices. To respond, city council approved a change to a five-year rental program with the intent to sell when conditions recovered. And the prolonged recession extended the rental period. The original tenants were provided with an offer to purchase, but none of them remained in the units, all of them moved on. In February 2018, staff first presented a recommendation to city council to sell the Station Square units. Council approved negotiations to sell a vacant unit to Tri Valley Reach, a local nonprofit, and requested staff to gather more information from the tenants regarding their various qualifying factors under the existing below-market rate program, and to return to council with a revised plan. So, the current status, four of the units are currently occupied by tenants, and one unit is vacant. Three of the four tenants have indicated that they are interested in exploring a purchase of their unit if that was provided to them. Staff recently was provided with some updated incomes, stated incomes from the tenants, which show that they are all moderate and mostly middle income, between what they've stated as $83,500 and then $140,000-plus. These incomes have not, I guess, again, been verified by staff, but have been expressed to us by the tenants. Current rents for the units are well below market and range between $2,310 a month and $2,415 per month. This is over $900 per month less than the current fair-market value for three-bedroom units in Livermore. The units themselves were recently appraised by a licensed real estate appraiser at values between 660 and 675K. Staff believes that it continues to be desirable at this time to sell the units. The original purpose of renting the units has been fulfilled, and the allocation of staff and funding resources to operate the units detracts from other city affordable So, several goals were considered when developing a revised disposition plan, including maintaining a fiduciary responsibility to the city's Affordable Housing Fund and applying housing resources appropriately, reducing displacement impacts on existing tenants, developing policies that apply to all tenants evenly, establishing some basic standards for tenants who were to, if they were to receive city assistance for a purchase, and addressing the city's affordable housing goals for low-income disabled households. So, in careful consideration of these many factors, staff recommends that the proposed plan sell the units at the appraised market value and offer tenants the first opportunity to purchase the unit they occupy. This returns to the original framework of the program, and in the current competitive market, this offers a real and significant benefit to have simply the first option to purchase. Tenants with a financial need would be offered down payment assistance up to 20% of the purchase price, and this could be as much as $135,000. The plan would offer relocation assistance to tenants who are not purchasing units, and the city would sell a, up to one additional unit to Tri Valley Reach. Any units not purchased by the tenants or by Tri Valley Reach would be sold at market price to the public with no assistance or restriction, so at market value. Proceeds from the sale of the units will return to the city's Affordable Housing Fund for current projects in the pipeline. So, for tenants who are able to purchase their units and have a financial need, the city would, as proposed, the city would provide a second mortgage loan up to 20% of the purchase price, and this is, again, estimated up to, could be $135,000. The city's loan would have, carry favorable terms and would accrue a below-market interest rate of 3% annually, requiring no payments for 30 years or until the first mortgage for the owner was refinanced or paid off. As proposed, there is no first-time homebuyer requirement, no minimum household size or asset limit, unlike the city's other BMR and mortgage assistance programs. So, to receive this assistance, tenants would be required to contribute a minimum amount of saved funds for the purchase. They must be creditworthy and able to secure a first mortgage meeting the city's standards. There is no limit on gifted or other funds that can be layered from other public or private sources. Tenants becoming owners must also agree to continuously live in the home. This offer of assistance exceeds what is legally required by the city to provide in terms of relocation, and the terms in terms of assistance are more flexible than what is offered through the other city mortgage assistance programs. If approved, in accordance with state law, the city would contract with a relocation specialist to prepare a plan which describes the assistance that will be provided to any tenants that do not purchase their units. Under state law, the tenants would be provided with five months to move and professional assistance in actually locating other units. The city will also provide cash assistance of approximately $5,000 per household for moving costs. In the plan, as proposed, in addition to the previously approved vacant unit, up to one additional unit would be sold to Tri Valley Reach. Sale of the units to Reach supports affordable housing opportunities for individuals with disabilities who earn less than 30% of area median income. Under this scenario, the city would hold a carry-back loan to assist Reach with the purchase. This will enable Reach to keep rents low on the units and make them available for three to six, that's three, three people per unit, of extremely low-income adults who may earn only disability income. This opportunity leverages the resources of the local nonprofit, Tri Valley Reach, to house and support disabled Livermore residents to live independently. In conclusion, staff recommends city council approve the proposed disposition plans for the, for the units at Station Square. Approve negotiation of agreements with Tri Valley Reach and the tenants, and direct staff to schedule a final disposition hearing and review agreements with Tri Valley Reach and the tenants at the May 13, 2019 council meeting or soon thereafter. Furthermore, staff recommends city council approve an appropriation of $86,350 in housing trust funds for the city's relocation services, housing assistance and costs to prepare the units for sale, and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute all documents and agreements, enlisting agreements necessary to implement the disposition plan. And staff is, concludes our presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this point?
Nope.
Okay, very good. That case, I have several cards. We have Angie Marshall, John Borgon, Sierra Marshall. Angie?
Good evening, city council. Mayor Marshon. You saw me here last year. I did see the staff report in which they were going to take these units and sell them under the, at the BMR rate, which would have been about $450,000 last year. I, council heard my concerns with that, and they directed Housing to return with more info. As a matter of fact, council members specifically vocalized that these units are a special and unique circumstance, and that the disposal of them should be treated as such. I have some new concerns about the disposition plan that they're proposing now. The units were purchased from the housing trust funds and non-restrictive, and other non-restrictive funds. They paid approximately $485,000 for my property and others. They have generated, to my knowledge, approximately $750K in, that's net, over the last nine years from these. I keep hearing this word "affordable," and selling these units at fair-market value at $670,000 is not affordable. I have some facts I'd like to share with the city council that do not align with the staff report in front of you. I do not make $100,000 to $127,000. I have my W-2 here, and I'm happy to share it. I make well less than that. I've also conferred with three real estate agents. These three real estate agents simply state that unless these units are severely upgraded, that they would not sell for that market value. I don't know, they don't know who did the appraisal, but none of them were done indoors. They don't understand, nobody asked me, nobody's, actually, I've only had maybe a two-minute conversation with somebody in Housing over this last year. The same-sized unit sold in December 2018 for $630K. It had carpets that weren't in need of repair. I know my particular unit, the carpets are horrible. The windows have never operated properly. I can't open and shut the windows. The house has settled, and there's some severe issues with the windows there. There is also some leaks under the sink that I've, that I've had. So, for, in the staff report, they want to sell these as-is at $670K. That is, the three real estate agents I talked to said that they won't sell them for that, they can guarantee. That's really all I had to say, other than I didn't want to be here. I really wanted to try to work out a reasonable plan with the city council, housing department, rather, but it has come to this. I also think that I need to say a side note here, that I feel it was severely inappropriate, Mr. Uranga, for you to contact my lender today and discuss my financial business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. John Borgon, Sierra Marshall, El Souza.
Good evening.
John Borgon.
My name is John Borgon. I am not a resident of Livermore. I am here in support of a friend who was in one of the, one of the units in question. I have in front of me State of California Government Code, Section 37364, Part A, as it states, "The legislature reaffirms its findings that the provisions of the housing for all Californians is a concern and vital statewide importance. The legislature recognizes that real property of cities can be utilized in accordance with the city's best interest to provide housing affordable to persons and families of low or moderate income. Therefore, notwithstanding any provisions of the city's charter or any other provision of law, whenever the legislative body of the city determines that a real property or interest therein owned or to be purchased by the city can be used to provide housing affordable to persons and families of low or moderate income, as defined by Section 50093 of the Health and Safety Code, or as defined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development or its successors, and that this use is in the city's best interests, the city may sell, lease, exchange, quit, claim, convey, or otherwise dispose of the real property or interest therein at less than fair-market value, or purchase an interest in the real property to provide that affordable housing under whatever terms and conditions the city deems best suited to the provision of such housing." That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Borgon. Sierra Marshall, El Souza, and Charlene Sandy, we heard your comments, but if you wanted to come back up and speak on this item, please feel free.
Hello, mayor and city council. My name's Sierra Marshall, and Angie Marshall is my mother. When my parents were married, we lived in a great, beautiful home and had so many wonderful family memories. After their divorce, I realized just how hard it is to afford a house as a single parent. I've moved four times in the past five years with my mom, and that's not even including the moves with my father. Needless to say, I'd really like to call somewhere home again. It's sort of scary knowing any day or anytime, someone can just tell you to pack up all your stuff and leave. My mom has done her best to be able to balance the cost of rent with paying things for, like, my club volleyball, my proms, my senior year, family vacations. Now I see my mom struggling to keep up more and more, something a teenage girl like me should not have to worry about. The reason she went back to school at her age was to advance her career so that she wouldn't have to struggle. It scares me that one day I will not be able to live here and raise a family due to the outrageous price of living. This whole experience has put a lot of stress on my mom and me. Last year, the housing department wanted to sell the units under the first-time homebuyer's program. This was great news because she would be able to buy the house for about $450,000. Then she was disqualified because the definition was changed for a first-time homebuyer. The housing department stated they would not make any exceptions for single parents. We've spent the entire last year waiting to hear what they would decide next. That brings me here tonight. I've read the research my mom has done, and she's tried to communicate with the housing department to avoid having to go to council. She loves her job at the airport and feared that speaking out on the housing department's lack of knowledge on their own programs would upset them and cause retaliation. Buying a home is supposed to be a wonderful memory and a proud moment. Maybe this is the home for us, and maybe it is not, but I've learned, especially from my mom, that I'll speak up for myself when I am passionate about something. All in all, nobody should be picked on because they speak the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. El Souza and Charlene Sandy.
Ella, Ella.
Ella, is it Ella?
Sheila.
Ella Souza here, okay. So, Ella Souza, Ms. Sandy?
Unless you have any further questions, and you recall what it is that I said, I don't have really anything to add, other than I just would really love some reconsideration to, to live here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Questions from the council at this point?
Yeah, so we've heard a couple of times that last year was 450, and now it's 660 or 675, or whatever it is. Can you help us all understand the appraisal then and the appraisals now?
The original proposal was to sell these units at a moderate-income level, and, and that, the moderate-income price at the time was the 425, 450, that was there. If we were to, the problem with the proposal was if we would move forward with it, the majority of the tenants, three out of the four tenants, would not qualify, they would be over-income.
Can you give me a timeframe when you were talking? You were talking about a year ago?
A year ago, when we first originally proposed it. We originally thought maybe to sell them to as a, to moderate-income households. But in so doing so, it would, it would prevent the existing tenants from, most of, the majority of existing, all of, I might mistake, all of the existing tenants from being able to do it. So, we came up with a different proposal to sell them, to not be part of our moderate-income first-time homebuyer program, but to create another program that's exclusively these units, that would... to these units, that would enable all the tenants to have an equal opportunity to purchase it. And what we did by, we sell these units at a market price, but provide each tenant with up to $130,000 worth of down payment systems, assistance in the form of a silent second. In addition, and that would do two things. It effectively lowers the price by $130,000, but it also enables them to avoid mortgage insurance, the PMI, which saves additional $300 to $400 a month. And in our discussions with, with each of those tenants, it appears by, by the information they provided, both in writing and verbally, and, and that they would, they would be able to qualify using that program for their unit. Wanted to, if I were to add, when we developed the program, we had some initial principles that we wanted to follow. Treat all the, all the tenants in those units fairly and equally. Also, a fiduciary responsibility to, to make certain that the minimum amount of, of city money is used for it, just enough to allow them to purchase their unit. The money is, you know, hard to come by, we have a lot, you know, it's for first-time home buyers, it's for affordable housing. We want to be real judicious in our use of it. And the other one is to make sure that the tenants who purchase these units would be, would be ready to purchase. They would have adequate credit, they would have the minimum 3% down, they would be eligible and successful first-time home buyer. And so that's how we came up with the, those principles, we came up with the, the new program.
Okay, so I'm struggling a little bit. So you're talking about roughly a year ago, they're, 450K?
No, actually, they were still, they were still worth the 600, and there were no appraisals done, but they were still worth about, you know, about what they are selling now.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm struggling with is, the number we heard was 450. So what, what was the 450?
It would have been a reduced price, reduced from the market price.
Okay, but today, we're talking about, let's just take 660 minus 130, that still leaves 530, that's more than.
Correct, because, because the existing tenants would not have been able to qualify.
Are the tenants there that are, are the tenants a year ago the same as the tenants now?
Yes, they are. But, but with the information that we were provided, they all have sufficient income.
Now or then?
Yeah, well.
I don't, see, I'm, I'm struggling to understand how they didn't qualify a year ago, but they qualify now, and the price has gone up a lot.
So, so one of your issues is that a number of your tenants were over-income for the maximum income for your moderate income program.
Is your mic on?
Some of your tenants.
Is your mic on?
It is, let me get closer. Some of your tenants were essentially over-income for your moderate income program. So that 400 and some odd thousand dollar number, while it is the moderate income, it wouldn't have been available to tenants whose incomes were above, and.
Oh, so some of them could, they didn't qualify because they made too much money?
Correct.
Ah, okay, you should have been clearer on that for me. Thank you.
Some of the, some of the other tenants didn't qualify because they weren't first-time home buyers, as defined by the program.
Got it, I knew that.
And so you're, one of the things we were trying to do is actually create a program that, while it used significant amounts of city subsidy to bring the, the unit price down, still allowed the tenants the ability to actually purchase the program without changing our entire moderate income program, because that actually ties to a whole number of our projects.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Presser Monroe?
So I'm wondering about the difference in assessment between six, you know, say 620 or whatever, I, I, I don't know what that would assess at with the apartment, with the, with the, fixed versus, the unit fixed versus not. Three, real estate agents said, oh, no way, real estate agents may vary in what they say. How did, how did this come to?
Well, I'm not sure about the qualifications or the appraisal ability of the real estate agents that were spoken to. We weren't in contact them. But we used licensed real estate appraisals that we've used many times before. And it, it's true, they, they did not enter the units, we didn't want to disturb the tenants, but, but it was based on comps in the area and comparability. If, if it goes during this process, there will be an official appraisal done, and it would inspect the inside of the unit and the outside, and we've got current comps. And if the price changes, you know, based on that appraisal, we would adjust the price to meet that, so whether it's higher or lower.
So I've got a question, and I'm trying to understand all of this, and there are a lot of pieces to it, and thanks for clarifying the difference in the value or number associated within the two different years. So it's not, it's not a comparison of the same thing, right?
That's correct.
So, but what I have heard is a refrain about maybe they're valued too high, and I guess anybody who's potentially buying real estate would normally say that. My question, though, is, the uncertainty in the appraisal is way less than the difference between the 400 number and the 670. So is there a solution here within the uncertainty of the appraisal? Or are we talking about, even if you went and got so many more appraisals, and you maybe lowered it by 30,000, does that solve the problem? Or do we still have a problem?
Problem, excuse me, problem by meaning folks qualifying?
Right.
Well, based on the numbers that we have, they should be, all the tenants who expressed interest in purchasing should have sufficient income to be able to qualify, even at the higher appraisal amount. So if the appraisal comes in a little bit less, because after they do the interior inspections and, and current comps, they would, they would still, they would be, also be able to qualify. But currently, based on the numbers that we've received in our, in our evaluation, plus the evaluation of outside banks that are involved with some of the tenants, they, they do qualify.
So, but it, it seems that if we're actually going to get to a, a number and strike a, strike something, we're going to have to have an appraisal in which somebody is inside the facility, so.
Yes, in fact, in fact, they're all going to be required to have a first mortgage, and the first mortgage lender will require a, a full appraisal to be done, and specs both the inside and outside, and looks at the comps. And we will base the, the purchase price on that. We believe it'll be close to what our appraiser says, but if it just turns out to be a little bit less, because the market changes, and there is some adjustments and fluctuations, we would propose that we would adjust it to what the appraisal price.
So I have a kind of a question in terms of how to proceed here. And it's just a question, I don't know, so I was thinking out loud, is that if we could get a more agreed-to number through a more in-depth appraisal, then I'd like to know if we have a deal with everybody. Right, because I, because I mean, I just, I don't know exactly how to think about what I'm being asked to do with the appraisal information that we have so far.
So what you're being asked to do is ultimately sell the units at market price with a 20% silent second down payment. That's essentially the authorization we are looking for from the council, and to give the current tenants first right of refusal. And so those are the three main components of the action before you. And indeed, if based on the specifics of the unit, the interiors of the unit, the comps in the marketplace, those numbers adjust, your staff would ultimately adjust those numbers in the approval process. Based on the numbers that our appraiser and ultimately staff ran with the 3% down and the 20% silent second mortgage, the, and if the income numbers that were provided are correct, people should qualify if they have good credit. If there are other issues, they do not have a down payment, their credit is ultimately not adequate to secure a first mortgage, then the tenant wouldn't be able to buy these units. So we don't generally design programs to ensure that a particular person wins the lottery, but we do try and do it so that they are eligible for that, and in this particular case, particularly eligible. These tenants have basically had a program designed around their incomes, their eligibility, their ownership status. So that's what we're asking for the authorization for this.
So I, I guess then, and thank you for that clarification, because we're, we're talking about the methodology for doing this and, and not the number. And, okay, so then the, the question is, should it be 20% or 15% or 25% and et cetera, right? But not, we're not trying to decide what the appraised value is at the moment.
We will have an updated appraisal that takes the full property condition into account.
Question for the city attorney. There was a citation from the, the government code regarding the disposition and the use of city funds. Is what we're looking at tonight, does that meet the provisions of that government code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Quick answer. Does questions, comments?
Yeah, first of all, I thought that was amazing, and it wasn't, it depends. But, so I'm sitting here and struggling with this, because what I'm hearing is that we have been, city staff has worked very hard to put together a program that they believe that respects the privilege, the, the status of the current tenants. And what I've heard from the current tenants is, yes, but that's not good, and I'm being affected, and it's hurting. And I want to acknowledge that, yeah, it, it hurts. And I also want to make, acknowledge that, sitting up here, part of the responsibility is to ensure that we do what's, we, up here represent the whole city. And so in thinking about this, what, what I, I have to under, the way I'm understanding this is that there are, there's a program, the program didn't work last year, for the current tenants, and therefore, another program which may not, also not work, has been a has been put into place. And we, the council, are being asked to decide on that. I have to tell you, having looked at this, it looks to me like the city has done pretty due diligence, and it also looks like it's going to hurt if, because it's not what is comfortable, it's not what, it's not the situation, it's not the status quo, and the status quo is, as we've understood, as I understand it, about $900 a month under market Honestly, I, I, that hurts. That really hurts. And I'm sorry, so.
All right, is there, what is the pleasure of the council to have a motion?
One other question.
Yes.
So could, could you explain the, where the 20% number came from?
We traditionally use the 20% number because, because it, at that level, it's much easier to qualify for a loan, and, and you also remove the need for the mortgage insurance, which has additional savings. Also, the 20% is a little bit higher, but still within the range of the amount of subsidy that we generally provide to our, our affordable units, which generally ranges from 90 to about 110, 120,000. So it would be within that typical range of subsidy that we provide for the unit, so. And then when we hit the magic 20% number, when you purchase a house, it's much easier to qualify for a loan.
It sounded like the number you, you're saying, this number is higher in the dollar amount range.
Yes.
It is, yes.
It is higher. We've already pushed the limit beyond in a dollar amount.
Yes, we have.
And, okay.
And the, as I understood, the, the silent second, when's the first payment due on that silent second?
Payment is due upon sale or transfer of the house.
And, or?
Our 30 years.
30 years. So it's a, it's basically, it's a.
Whichever comes first.
It's, pardon me?
Whichever comes first.
Right, so it's a, in effect, a loan from the city for $135,000 for 30 years, but, but without a payment.
That's correct.
Okay. And that's 20% of the purchase price, so that brings it down to 500, yeah, thereabouts.
530 range.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move, we accept staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Carling to accept the staff recommendation, seconded by Council Member Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, all in favor?
I was just going to say is that I agree with the earlier sentiment, these, these kinds of decisions are never easy under the circumstances, but it, it does sound like we have gone beyond what we would normally do, so I'm good with that.
I'd also like to point out that we're not, the city's not in the business of managing apartments, right?
That's correct.
And we've held on to these longer than we anticipated when we bought them 10 years ago, right? Isn't that true?
That's, that's true.
And some of the money would go back to the affordable housing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, account, so.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinctions passed unanimously. Thank you for your comments tonight. Hopefully you can make this work out. Thank you. Okay, 6.04. This is the introduction of an ordinance amending the Livermore Municipal Election Code.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll be presenting your staff report on this item this evening. Back in September of last year, the city council created a matters initiated requesting that we adopt a local code of campaign fair practices similar to what already exists in the elections code. Additionally, the council, as part of its matters initiated, requested language for an ordinance to require, I'm sorry, to request proponents share their talking points that are used for signature gatherers to ensure they're factually accurate. And this came on the heels of a number of comments that the council received with regard to a referendum and an initiative that were both presented to the voters for signature gathering this past summer. The code of fair campaign practices is contained in the elections code 20440. It's voluntary, and it applies to all candidates, but by the language in the elections code, it only applies to state committees. It doesn't apply to local committees. In that case, the city clerk provides the voluntary code to candidates, but not to local election committees. The ordinance before you this evening would then, would now direct the city clerk to provide this code of fair campaign practices to local committees, like she does for candidates, to see if they want to voluntarily sign up for this. In addition, the ordinance before you contains a clause with regard to voluntary view of talking points used by signature gatherers. Again, as I stated, this was brought up by a number of speakers at your podium, claiming that certain people had misrepresented the effect of the initiative and the referendum. Now, elections code 18600 already makes it a misdemeanor to make a false statement or misrepresentation in order to secure a signature for it about referendum or initiative. That does present certain enforcement challenges, and it does very little to discourage behavior by signature gatherers. The ordinance before you this evening has a clause as well that would encourage proponents to provide the city with a copy of their talking points with the voters to check for factual, factual accuracy. Again, mindful of First Amendment rights, like the code of campaign fair practices, this process would be voluntary. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Questions at this point for the city attorney? Okay. With that, I'm going to open the public comment period. John Lawrence, Jeff Caskey, Brent Seiler. Mr. Lawrence?
Good evening, Mayor Marshon, council, staff members. My name is John Lawrence. I'm a resident of Livermore. I've also spent, well, probably around 30 years on my career as a local government employee. So I've spent a lot of hours sitting on the table over here, and, which kind of reminds me to thank you for the long meeting tonight, because it's another reminder about how much I'm enjoying being retired. I strongly encourage this step, but I just look at it as a step. I think there needs to be so much more, and I'm not sure how that can be done. As a government employee, I was always very frustrated. As a government employee, I was always very frustrated at being privy to a lot of the activities that I've thought were very unethical and downright dishonest at times, by particular special interests and political action groups and individuals. I think that the boards and councils have very strict regulations that they have to follow regarding the sunset, or the, the sun exposure, the daylighting of their activities, but that's not necessarily the case of others. I think at the national level, we have a daily example of misuse of public process and abuse of just information and power that's put out. Locally, we've had a very good example here, I think. It's in a special interest group called, well, they were the Friends of Livermore, then they became Vibrant Livermore, and then according to one of their most recent ads, which I have right here, they are just a citizen group. And I think the important thing is, is for the public to know, in all of our candidates and the people trying to influence the public's business, who exactly they are, what exactly they're doing, and where specifically their funding comes from. And I don't think that we've seen a lot of that. I think as an example here with the, the ads that you see here, they talk about a flawed process and a flawed plan. This is in regards to council's plan for the downtown development. Well, the process was not flawed. What was flawed was the hijacking of the input session and trying to load it up with members of their specific group that were able to influence what the total results were. I think the very disingenuous and dishonest signature gathering for petitions is another thing that was flawed. And I think these ads themselves are flawed. I mean, they just are not accurate. And I think that the last election was a good message that the community at large does not appreciate, deceitful, dishonest. And at this point, this is just downright becoming vindictive. I mean, it's, it almost seems pointless. I would be embarrassed to be part of a group that was putting an ad out like this. So, I encourage the city to do as much as they can to encourage this. Maybe they need something like to have at a national publicity where the number of Pinocchios a group gets, or something like that. But I think it's important that we, that we do whatever we can to sunlight, to expose, and to give as much information to the public as possible about who is trying to influence the, the business of the public. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Jeff Caskey, Brent Seiler, Asa Strout.
Good evening, Jeff Caskey, 585 South K. This agenda item is actually two separate items. The first piece is to encourage candidates and independent expenditure committees to voluntarily subscribe to the code of fair campaign practices. I will bet that every campaign is going to claim that they faithfully adhere to this code, yet just last year, we, we saw a full-page ad from a local IEC attacking the character of two candidates, not their issues or their experience, but instead stating that they were bought and paid for, that they were apparently morally too weak. This in spite of the fact that the code says, "I shall not permit the use of character defamation," and other part pledges to repudiate such behavior by others. So, I expect you'll see those same people up here in front of you claiming rigid adherence to this code. I support the intent of the code. I hope it does indeed lead, guide local politics. We'll see. The second piece is about facts. We have a national debate on facts, alternative facts, scientific facts. Local facts are debated. What is enough traffic? What is enough parking? What is acceptable traffic? This would ask city staff in five days to determine the factual basis of voluntarily submitted referenda or initiatives. Well, these are obviously hot-button, tough issues in Livermore, and perhaps it's expected that the city wants an edge in promoting its version of those facts. But asking city staff, who serve at the council's pleasure, to be the unbiased fact arbitrators, in particular in matters where the city has taken a public position, puts staff in a difficult position, looking an awful lot like a conflict of interest. But it turns out that we're very fortunate, really. We have a mechanism for determining not just facts, but significance, relevance, and ultimately which statement or candidate better represents the will of the people. It's called an election. It's ensconced in our constitution, and along with free speech and a free press, it solves this problem. The city puts out its position, the challengers put out theirs, the voters decide. They decide what matters, what to believe, and who to believe. To pretend that the city has some monopoly on the truth is to forget the purpose and the necessity of a democracy. Thank you.
Brent Seiler, Asa Strout, Joan Green.
Well, we're close to the end. When I saw this one come up, I was kind of surprised. You know, the last campaign, you gotta have pretty thick skin to do what you do when you run as a candidate. People sling mud, and, you know, you get hit with some of it, some of it you miss. So, you know, when I found out they took out two full-page ads, it kind of showed me how much of a threat it was then, kind of gave me a little hope. But at the end, what I found out was hypocrisy. We had people who signed the document of being fair in campaigning, and at the end, it wasn't really a here-to. So, now we're trying to come up with something else that, under California law, is already covered. If someone goes off and they try to collect signatures, and they're, they're falsifying the information, there's a legal recourse. Take it. We don't need a voluntarily ordinance that says, "I'm gonna play fair," because we know it's not gonna happen, okay? We heard one candidate say that there were emails sent to, to potential voters about his background. How is that morally right to do? And we're sitting here saying, "Now we want to voluntarily do it?" Well, weren't we already supposed to be doing it? And it didn't happen. I think this is one of these fluffy democratic socialist type of things that, that we're wrapping national stuff around to the local level. I mean, why do we need to have an ordinance that says we're gonna play fair when we already have something that says we're gonna play fair? So, I just don't get it. I mean, it's just like one of these fluffy, how do you say it? If you don't, if you don't pass it, you can't use it against someone in the future. I guess that's the only thing I'm thinking of. So, I think it's really a waste of the council's time to even consider it. You know, yes, we've got people that, you know, these PACs that don't come up and share information factually. You know, I was asked to, or it was almost, I think someone said, "I demand that you tell them to stop." Well, I never took anything from them, never asked them to do anything. They did upon themselves, and we've heard council say, "When the PACs go after this, there's nothing we can do about it as candidates. They're free to do what they want to do." So, if we want to stop this, then we, that's what we need to address, not this voluntarily program. We need to address something that says, "This is how PACs have to operate within Livermore, if there's a way to legally do it." So, I'd say, please focus on that aspect of it, and not this touchy-feely type of thing that really doesn't have any teeth, or really does anything for us.
Thank you. Asa Strout, Joan Green, Evan Branning.
Hi, Asa Strout. Thanks for having me. I'm actually talking on something not quite similar, but in the same vein. When we're talking about election, I think there should be something to do that we could do more for the elections to make them a little bit more fair. This last election was one of Livermore's most expensive elections. At the end of the, everything's being said and done between all the groups and the candidates, it was about just over or under $600,000, which is an absurd amount of money for a Livermore local election. We didn't know that number until the end of January. So, up until, you know, just recently, we had no idea what the final cost of the election was. And the reason for that is our reporting requirements after the election are kind of lax. And what really needs to happen is, we need to bring those reporting requirements in a little bit more, and we need to make them faster. We need to make them easier to read so that someone can just go to a website and see exactly what they're looking at, and know exactly what the election campaign finance is about. And the reason I bring that up is because when we look at that $600,000 number, one organization themselves spent upwards of $460,000 dwarfing everybody else. And you didn't know that until the end of January. In that group, upwards of 90% was funded by two individuals within that group. Much of that donation's coming the last couple of days before the election, but after the last finance reporting requirement. So, this is still pertinent and informative information that is, the voters should know. But we didn't know until the end of January. That is after the votes are counted, after everything about the election is settled, and after that, the voters are just kind of left wondering what happened. Well, what happened is, we had one group spend upwards of $460,000 funded by two individuals pushing an agenda. Now, luckily, their efforts were for naught, but that's not always the case in Livermore. And historically, that is definitely not the case. So, as some of you may know, I represent Unify Livermore, and on top of what we're talking about today, Unify Livermore is recommending that Livermore pass some sort of ordinance or a policy that enables campaign finance reporting to happen quicker and easier to understand. It should, you shouldn't have to have an accounting degree to understand the ins and outs of the 460. It should just be right there, front and center. Here's a summary of what this organization has spent. Here's a summary of what this candidate's spent. And it should be happening significantly quicker up until the very, ideally, the very last day or the day before the election, so someone can go in the day of voting and understand exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Green, and finally Evan Branning.
Joan Green, thank you for this opportunity. Jan Brevant was not able to be here, and she wrote something which I'm going to read. She says, "My understanding is the city council wants a policy that anyone submitting a referendum can voluntarily submit their facts to the city to be checked for accuracy prior to submitting the referendum. Will the city and any group opposing that referendum be required to submit their opposing facts to the group responsible for the referendum? Where is the transparency if they do not?" So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Evan Branning.
All right. Thank you very much again. My name is Evan Branning, and it looks like maybe we'll at least not have a midnight meeting tonight, so. I just wanted to speak in favor of this motion. I do believe that we need more transparency. I do think one of the, there are some issues that we can go a little bit further with, and I'm hoping we can either add them onto this, or that we can look at putting them in in the future. So, there's a couple of issues that have been brought up. One is with fact-checking, and I think that should include advertising as well, if possible. Advertising often is a little bit, well, wild. This is, this is a voluntary program. It would be nice if the city or a third-party fact-checker was able to look at it. I do know with Jason Alcala here, there is a difference when people are talking about, is something enough parking or not, and the debate, that I don't think he would let slide something that is an opinion piece as fact. I'm pretty sure that he has done a very, very good job of being quite clear on what is factual, what is not factual, and what is an opinion. And I don't believe he would do anything in any way to affect someone's ability to express an opinion on matters that are coming before the council. The other part is, I do think it is vitally important that we do have reporting requirements that will make it more transparent. As Asa said, we saw the, we saw the reports coming in two and a half months, roughly three months after the election, when nothing could be done about it anyways. The vast majority of the money was hidden in how it was spent before the election, and I believe the city does have the capability to actually make reporting requirements clearer as well as more timely. And so, those, those small changes will help with adding transparency to elections. It is not a panacea. It is a voluntary program where I would hope that people would follow and adhere to it. I know that it is difficult to enforce, and there is no overriding people's free speech. They're allowed to say what they want, when they want. We're simply asking people to agree to be their best selves, and we're hoping that they will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strout. Mr. Brennan. Okay, that's it for the comment cards. I'm gonna close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Warner?
I've got a couple of thoughts here I'd like to go through. Bear with me. So, as was pointed out, there are a couple of items here, and then there, it was on the, in the packet, but then there's an additional one that was also raised with respect of reporting. So, there are kind of a few topics. But one is, let's start with the code of conduct. As a candidate, we're asked to sign that voluntarily, and we do that. And so, the reason, and I think I'm the one who initiated this, was we have PACs who are acting with lots of more money and, and potential influence, and there's no reason not to ask them to sign a code. I think that, you know, the enforcement is certainly an issue, but there really isn't an enforcement against the candidate, but we've found it to be beneficial to have it available for candidates. So, I'm just thinking it's really worthwhile to extend it to the PACs. Now, if somebody's gonna be unethical, they're gonna be unethical. But we still put it out there as an affirmation of what we stand for. And then, the public can really find, see whether someone is adhering to what they say. So, now, let me turn to another question on the facts. And what I heard from Mr. Caskey is, well, the facts are just, alternative facts are a thing, and we don't have facts. I don't come from it from that point of view. And let me give you an example. Mr. Lawrence referenced the recent ad in The Independent. Now, this is a very interesting example, and it also gets to what Mr. Seiler said, is we already have means to kind of deal with people who do things. So, let me just start with the means. So, yes, under the First Amendment, people have the right to lie. And they do, even if they, in, you know, publicly, they do it. And we're not talking in any way, shape, or form of abridging that right to lie, because people want to have it, and it's guaranteed under the Constitution. So, that's not what this is about. However, under the Elections Code, Section 18600, every person is guilty of a misdemeanor, that's a criminal offense, who, circulating as a principal or agent, or having charge or control of the circulation of, or obtaining signatures to, any state or local initiative, referendum, or recall petition, intentionally misrepresents, or intentionally makes any false statement concerning the contents, purport, or effect of the petition to any person who signs, or who desires to sign, or who is requested to sign, or who makes inquiries with reference to it, or to whom it is represented for his or her signature. So, it's against the law to lie, and it's there. Now, we do have video evidence where patently false statements were made, so we know that there was not good activity in the last election. But let's go a little bit further, because in the ad from The Independent, it says, "6641 Livermore voters asked the city for a better downtown plan." And you have figures holding up signs saying, "A central park, appropriate homes, better parking, and quality hotel." Now, let's be, I want to ask the staff some questions about the referendum. Just don't forget what I just read. Anybody who misleads someone about the purport or effect, okay. Okay. I'll ask the staff, I don't know which one of you want to answer this. Was there anything in the downtown language that we had to rescind, and going back to it, that would ostensibly impact the quality of the hotel?
No.
But it did impact the height?
It impacted the height, but we are working on a three-story proposal that will have the same level of quality.
Did it impact the city's ability to locate parking in any place, or the amount?
No.
Did it speak to the appropriateness of homes in any way that we were allowed to put in?
No.
No. Did it impact our ability to design a central park?
No.
So here's what I'm faced with. We have the ad from The Independent saying, "The voters asked the city for a better plan," and presumably these statements are the components of that better plan, wherein, in fact, the referendum had nothing to do with any of those. So now we're in this situation. One second. You've got two things. One is, if an agent lies to get a signature, that signature, and I'll ask the staff to confirm this, is not invalid, the courts have held, because the presumption is that the person signing knew what they were doing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So therefore, under the court held, holds, that the people who signed that petition knew that the petition had nothing to do with the items in this ad. The other interpretation is that the people were fooled. And who were they fooled by? They were fooled by the petition gatherers. And then you have clear result that the person gathering the signatures committed a misdemeanor, criminal offense. Those are the only two choices here. So I think we have seen clear evidence that we have a big problem in Livermore with people playing fast and loose with the facts. So what we can do about it, I'm not sure, but I would like to request staff to let us know. Because as Mr. Seiler said, we should figure this out. So on the third point that I would like to get to, is that I do believe that the city has the ability to regulate what's known as a local campaign committee. Is that correct?
So I'm going to urge a little bit of caution here with regard to this item. That's not what was on the agenda before us. But to answer your question, the city has the ability to adopt local campaign regulations that are not inconsistent with state requirements and don't conflict with state requirements.
So my question is, then, because it was brought up in the audience, maybe this becomes a matters initiated. But I'd like to know, do we have the ability to do what was requested? And that is to ask for more transparency and timeliness. And in particular, from my own experience as a candidate, I know that there's a base data file with the details on every transaction. So what I would request is that that file be made available, and it be made available on a timely basis. So that's what I have to say on these matters. So I'm in favor of the voluntary pledge. I'm in favor of exploring how we can, as Mr. Seiler said, enforce the rules better. And I'm in favor of figuring out how we can get more transparency and more timeliness on the reporting.
Vice Mayor?
So I'm in favor of the, playing by the rules for the individual candidates. I'm less enthusiastic about the other measure. I think, I frankly think it's a waste of time, because we're asking people to voluntarily give something to staff and putting them in an awkward position, and then they don't even have to, they don't even have to abide by it. So I think it's an overburden for the staff. And to ask the city clerk to read somebody's proposed language for an initiative or a referendum and comment with respect to the facts, I think is putting the city clerk in a very awkward position. So I'm against that part of it. I'd be more interested in hearing more about what Mr. Stroud and Mr. Branning were talking about, alluded at that.
Justice Monroe?
I would go along with that. I'm concerned about the, I've got to say, facts are funny things. I know what facts are, and I also know that when, my understanding of facts, including perhaps the law of gravity, has been challenged by people who perhaps think you can jump off a nine-story building and be just fine for at least the first eight stories. I'm referring to climate change here. So what I'm concerned about is getting into a mess where the city is asked to adjudicate and thereby placing themselves in, placing us in a position which isn't where I'd like us to be, and isn't going to go anywhere good because of the nature of disagreement over what seems to be pretty clear to most of us and maybe isn't to people who think a central park is a central park instead of Stockman's Park. So, let's go with what we can do. And I think what we can do is increase the rules around reporting. And, you know, so I would be in favor of that as well, if we can find a way to do that. We've got electronic reporting. It shouldn't be a problem. I mean, or it shouldn't be, I would hope it's not a problem.
Can I just, I just want to clarify some of what I meant.
Sure.
Just, I wasn't saying that we should be submitting the thing to the city for the fact-checking, right? So I'm just, you guys didn't speak to the other thing. So first, I mean, so I think we want to get to, do we want to have the voluntary pledge for the committees? Do we want to see to the extent to which we can actually enforce the laws that exist against lying to get signatures? And then the third piece was around the reporting.
So, you know, we've got a bunch of scientists up here, and so it's just, it's astounding to me that people are talking about, well, what are facts? Because all of us up here understand what facts are. And the, and what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we enforce some of the regulations that we do have out there? I mean, for example, facts. With regards to the most recent election, we all saw video evidence of a signature gatherer saying, "The city has taken away the park, and they're going to put a million square feet of commercial in the middle of the downtown." Well, you know, that's pretty easy to figure out if that's a fact or not, because we've all talked about that, we voted on that. And yet, David Rounds, the president of Friends of Livermore, stood in this council chamber and admitted that he wrote the scripts for the signature gatherers. He wrote the scripts for the signature gatherers, and the signature gatherers were saying that there was a million square feet in the downtown. Is that a disputable fact? No, that's not. So what we're trying to do is how to rein this in, we've talked about, and I know we're getting a little far afield here, but how to, to put some regulations on the political action committees so that we can at least have some sense of control that we're responsible for the city, and that our residents have the information they need to make informed decisions. And when you've got somebody out there spending hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to divide and deceive the community, what we're looking to do up here is to try to find some way to ensure that our community gets the best information that they can. So that's what we're kind of struggling with up here, is how do we get there? And so we would hope that people would voluntarily provide good information. We've had people admit that they aren't. But how do we get there? That's the thing that we're struggling with here.
So I would say that we don't. And let me explain what I mean by that. Part of that narrative that is being, you know, that ad shows is that the city is doing bad things. Now, we know that most of Livermore doesn't believe that, because the election results showed that most of Livermore doesn't believe that. You know, so actually, the process worked decently well. I'm not sure those ads aren't being counterproductive at this point. So you can put a lot of money in, and if the result, and if the, if the reality is so counter to what the lies are, it doesn't matter. And it seems to me that if we control what we actually can control, which is, you know, the, we can check how much money you've spent, then that puts the city in a, on track to do the job that we need to do, which is to actually make the good stuff happen, that this, most of the city vote, you know, what was it, 70% of the city voted to see that happen? Something like that?
Seventy-seven percent. Who's counting?
Okay. My apologies. You sure it wasn't 78?
No, no.
Okay. But the point is, is that the city very clearly said that we're on the right track. I am actually concerned that if we, if we enact something that makes it look like we're, as a city, taking sides, then we, I mean, first, I don't think it's necessary, and I think it may be counterproductive.
I wouldn't say taking side. I'm not talking about taking side, I'm talking about ensuring the truth is coming out.
I understand, I understand that. However, what the truth, again, this is where, you know, truth, we're, we are all scientists up here. However, we also know that facts frequently take a side, first you get the narrative, then you get the facts. And if the facts don't fit in with your narrative, they don't matter. That's, that seems to be the way people work. I'm sorry, but that's the way it works.
So you make an interesting point here about, and it's been brought up a couple of times, city attorney, a question for the city attorney. And this may be something for matters initiated, but just a question at this point, since we're talking about election codes, can we regulate the reporting of, from either candidates or political action committees, the local committee? Because as was pointed out, in a recent election, the finances for one of the elections were not reported until seven months after the election.
So again, as I said earlier, I'm going to urge caution on this particular item, because it's not before us. But if it were brought up as a matter of initiative, we would look into that. The city does have the ability to adopt local campaign requirements, as long as they don't conflict or prevent the candidate from filing its required statements with the state. So there is an opportunity there. If it comes up during matters initiated, you can give us, myself and staff direction, we can look into that and report something back to you.
Okay.
I'd just like, I add that I agree with Councilmember Monroe in this. I think the election did show that it worked just the way we hoped, that the citizens agreed with the decisions that we've made. And I don't think we need to further burden the staff with trying to develop another ordinance or rule, or whatever we want to call it, around the groups that gather signatures for either initiative or referendum. I just think that's a waste of time.
So here's what, you know, I think we're getting a little bit sideways here on this, you know, facts are relative kind of discussion. So that's not what, I want to repeat what I was saying earlier. First of all, let's, we've got a few things before us. One is, do we want to have a voluntary code of conduct for the political action committees? So you say, no. I say, I would like to see one. That isn't burdensome, it's not a, we already have it, it's just model it after the candidates. And if we don't need it for political action committees, then I would submit, we don't need it for candidates either. Right? But it doesn't make sense to me to have it for one and not the other. So that's one thing. So let's, we, where I'm coming from is I don't want, don't think we have to have staff do fact-checking, okay? Because that won't get us there. But I do believe we should have the code of conduct extended to the PACs. Second of all, what we, what I was asking for is, it is a criminal offense to lie to get signatures. And to the extent that we can help enforce that, I think we should. Because if you say, well, there is no way to determine if somebody lies, because everything is relative now, alternative, then we might as well throw out that election code section as well. So I believe the election code section is there, and it should remain there. And if we can help enforce it, that's different than writing an ordinance. But it's asking, is there, so it's a question of asking staff to come back with maybe a memo, just saying what we can and can't do. That's not the same thing as asking for an ordinance. And then the third thing, if we can get through this, is we can't vote on anything tonight, but we can request information to come back to us on what our options are with respect to more timely and transparent reporting. So if we could not go sideways on this fact-checking stuff, because everybody's kind of grabbed that, so I will submit, that's not what I'm asking for. But I am asking for those other three, so I'm just requesting, don't start again with saying we can't test relative facts. Let's get off of that one, and let's get.
Relative facts, then.
Right. Let's get to those three points, so, you know, let's get into 11 o'clock. So first of all, can we just make some progress? Can we, I don't know if we need three heads or what, but how many of us, I'd like to see, are in favor of extending the code of conduct voluntary to PACs?
I think it's a noble effort. So I would, it doesn't hurt to ask. And it's trying to raise the level of.
Okay. So we get some sense there. Now, how many want to know what we can do to enforce the, help enforce the election code with respect to lying to get signatures? This is just a request for a report back from staff.
For a memo, for example.
Right.
Okay, okay. I could go for that.
How, how, I don't know how to word this. How hard would it be to get a memo back?
If you say, the three of you ask for this, I'll get it back to you. So it takes some research, just like everything else we do, but it's not going to, you know, make or break the world.
I'd be curious.
Okay. So that item would be a matters initiated.
Right. Okay, so I'm just trying to get, so we can get through this conversation. And then the third one is, how many of us are in favor of, again, getting information back on what options we have for more timely and transparent reporting?
Yes.
Okay. So now, so I think we can maybe wrap this. And so I'd like to, what is before us, I'd like to move that we extend the voluntary code of conduct to PACs.
So if I can help you frame your motion here today, you have an ordinance before you, the motion is to introduce that ordinance. If it's the council's pleasure not to include that section relative to the reporting, the review of factual talking points for factual accuracy.
Right.
The motion would be to introduce the ordinance to make the amendment as Chapter 2.14 Elections, except for the language in 2.14.340.
Exactly what I meant to say.
So is that your motion?
Is that a fact? Is that a fact?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
So I move that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'll, never, go ahead.
Discussion?
I don't understand what we're voting for.
So, the action before you in the staff report is to introduce an ordinance to make an amendment to the, to your local elections code, to include a code of fair campaign practices for local independent committees. If you look at Exhibit A on page 289 of your packet, the motion being offered by Councilmember Warner, that I helped him frame, would be to introduce those sections 2.14.310 through 0.330, but not 0.34, which talks about talking points and reviewing those for factual accuracy. So based upon your prior...
So I don't understand, I mean, how does, how do we know, I mean, so does a PAC have to register in some respects? I mean, how does that work?
Yes. Yes, so we would have a situation where you have an initial campaign filing statement when you are a committee. So that information would come to the city clerk, the way the ordinance is triggered, is upon that initial filing, just like a candidate files a request to, for candidacy, the city clerk would present that code of fair campaign practices to that committee or whoever files it.
Okay.
And, as well as if it's a standing committee, which in Sunset continues to exist when you come up on an election or an item, again, the city clerk would present that opportunity.
Okay, any, there's no, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, there's no enforcement on this, right?
Correct. Give us a second.
Okay.
Who's the second?
I made the second.
Thank you.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right. So any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Three ayes, and Vice Mayor Carling in opposition.
Very good, and with regard to the other two items, I think we had a collective consensus, we had matters initiated early on those, to give direction to staff. If that's the council's pleasure, we'll proceed with that.
Okay. All right, so moving on to, let's see, finally matters initiated and council reports, we can finish it up in a couple of minutes here. All right, Councilmember Monroe.
I just have a number of words here. Okay, so, I, this might take a little bit of time. First of all, I attended the, on the February 26th, I attended the annual employee service awards luncheon along with other people here. And I just want to say that we are incredibly fortunate in our staff, and it was a pleasure to meet people in so many departments with so many experiences. And, I just, it was a really wonderful experience. On the 27th, I met with County Supervisor Scott Haggerty in a meet and greet, and then that evening, several council mayor members and the mayor attended, and I attended the Tri-Valley City Council, Tri-Valley's City Council Dinner. So if you've been following the CASA compact discussion locally and regionally, you're not going to be surprised to know that the subject of the discussion was the Tri-Valley City's response to the bills generated by the compact's points. And then, on the next, a couple days later, March 1st, similar concerns were echoed in another meeting with Assemblymember, I went with representatives from the East Bay League of California Cities, to meet with Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Kahan to discuss, you know, these areas of concern. So, both places, there were general agreement on two points, that, first of all, that housing is linked to transportation jobs and infrastructure, and second, that Silicon Valley and the Peninsula, places that generate large numbers of jobs must also find ways to generate commensurate So, I'm, I'm going to cut some of this, because it's getting late. What I want to bring out is that Livermore works hard to integrate the four elements, housing, jobs, transportation, infrastructure, that needs to happen regionally, and I believe we as a city need to, to push for that regionally. It's a real concern for quality of life for everyone, particularly those at the lower ends, because when those get out of balance, those are the people that get hurt worst in earliest. On March 4th, I participated in a conference call with Vice Mayor Carling and Human Resources on how Union City manages overnight parking situation this Thursday night, March 14th. Come hear that presentation, along with several others, and the first of several community meetings on homelessness. This is my commercial announcement, join us, Thursday, March 14th, same time, 7 o'clock, same place, right here, but we won't end at 11:00, or later. From the 6th to the 8th, I was in Long Beach attending the Planning Commissioners Academy. Many council members begin as planning commissioners, but that wasn't what I did, so I was doing remedial work, catching up on what it means to be a planning commissioner. That information was incredibly useful, but I want to highlight a couple of things. First of all, our downtown plan is one that everyone else wants to have. Same thing with our jobs-housing balance. Livermore is the model for what other cities want to emulate, and I just think that's really cool. And second, I want to give a shout out to two presenters from Livermore, City Manager Mark Roberts gave a great presentation on how we developed and are implementing our downtown plan, and City Planner Scott Lee used the Legacy Project, that's the old Growth Brothers, to discuss design details, I really hope I have the term right, on how one goes from a box to an interesting project using things like horizontal articulation of base, middle, and top, along with insetting of windows and roof overhangs. I'm now looking at Livermore in a whole different way. And then, I learned the details, and I think this was the most important thing, the details of the new transportation metric. In the old metric, we had level of service, meaning how do you get people from point A to point B as quickly as possible? That's what gets us, what John Stein said earlier, where he gets on the road and sits for a while, because he's getting from point A to point B really fast. The new metric is vehicle miles traveled, meaning how do we ensure vehicles are traveling fewer miles? And so, both of those, when you think about those, it really, you end up thinking about what makes a community, and how the first model means that you end up with discouraging community. The second model, which means you go slower, but it also means you travel fewer, in a car anyway, you travel less, and you're able to build communities better. It's really reshaped the way I'm thinking about what, you know, what, what this integration between jobs, housing, and transportation means. And then finally, on the 9th, I attended LAAC's World's Fair at the Bankhead. Our youth commissioners created a fair that celebrates the diversity of culture and history from around the world, complete with a variety of performances. It was interesting, engaging, and I really hope it can become an annual event.
All right, very good, thank you.
I'm probably going to repeat everything I said.
Oh, no, I don't have to now. Councilmember Warner?
So in addition to the employee lunch that you mentioned, that on March 4th, went to a, you know, that's the Wheels Board Meeting, it was straightforward and short, so nothing to report out of that. On the Wednesday, though, I went to the Livermore Chamber of Commerce Business Alliance meeting, and the mayor was there as well. And what I found very interesting on that was a presentation on the real estate market and trends, and it just occurred to me that, as we think about in the future, that we're going to be readjusting, readjusting our general plan, and maybe our specific plans even at Isabel, that there's going to be a need to really understand those trends. Because I think the thinking that was in place when those plans were put together is dramatically different than it is now. So I, we'd just like to suggest that when those things come back to us, that we really make sure we engage with the, with the real estate community experts as to what the trends are. In the same way that we did when we brought in a lot of the experts when we were planning the downtown recently. And so then, and then at the, in the evening, it went to the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, because Trish was in LA on a, what was that event you attended?
Planning Commissioners Academy.
Yeah, Planning Commissioners, so you got into the details. Well, one of the things that came up in LCAC was Jim Schmidt, was talking about the building that he would like to put on this pad, when this, when this chamber goes, and it would be a shop area, and maybe storage for the arts groups. So I just want to say, that's something that's percolating through, and I'm a supporter of that, and I think the mayor and I were at an opera event several years ago, where we were talking about that. So, just want to say that that will get some attention, and people get going on it over the next while. But it would be a very, in my mind, a very great thing to enable the arts group to have the workshop area. So that's it, I think the other matters initiated, we've covered.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Yes, thank you. So on the 26th, as was mentioned, I participated in the Employee Service Awards. On the 27th, I had a meeting at Stop Waste over in Oakland. That evening was the Tri-Valley City Council Dinner, as Councilmember Monroe mentioned, participated in the conference call with her on the 4th, with Jesus Garcia from Union City about parking. On the 6th, the mayor and I attended the Livermore Police Department swearing-in, a very nice event, recognizing 12, 12 new employees in the police department. It's very meaningful to see those people dedicating their lives to the service of this community in front of their friends and family. It's, it's really a wonderful event. That evening, I went to the East Bay Community Energy Board Retreat, and we had a very lengthy and in-depth discussion about power transmission and so on in this, in the Northern California, and what the East Bay Community Energy is doing as part of that. On the 7th, the mayor and I participated, and City Manager and the Deputy Assistant City Manager participated in the Bay East Real Estate Association meeting, and this would, we got a very good update on the real estate trends, homeownership in particular, that Councilmember Warner was just discussing. And I will also put a plug in for, on the 14th, here, as Councilmember Monroe mentioned, we're having a meeting with the community on homeless, and bringing in some of the folks that have some experience with various and sundry aspects of trying to deal with homeless problems, including parking, for example. Regarding matters initiated, I'd like to get, and this is around cannabis, I'd like to get an update on where we are with respect to the county, and what, where we stand with them in terms of cannabis. And I'd also like to find out what we could do as a city to restart the discussion about a cannabis facility within the city limits, which might include a testing lab. I know that there has been some interest shown by somebody that wanted to set up a testing lab, so I think, both from medicinal, recreational, and testing. Not suggesting that I am completely in favor in all those, but I'd like to at least start the discussion again.
Two, one, two, three, okay. And so we'll prepare a memo for the council's consumption, and you can figure out what you want to do with it.
Thank you. Considering the lab in Sacramento was just putting out bogus data, and all the regulations that were built on that.
We wouldn't put out bogus data.
What?
We wouldn't.
No, no, we didn't, but that, but the laboratory in Sacramento that was responsible for all of the, the data generation for the state, turned out it was all false.
Or you're saying it's a business opportunity?
Yeah. Okay, so, in addition to everything that we all went to together, and I won't relate that all over again, February 28th, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and it's just becoming more and more, you know, CASA all the time, because the, the next day was the East Bay Economic Development Alliance Land Use and Infrastructure Committee. We had Brad Paul coming from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and he talked about how most of the cities had been excluded from the planning process with CASA, and now they were trying to backpedal and include everybody after the fact, after all this legislation, legislation has now gone up to the state. On the 3rd was the half marathon, Livermore Half Marathon, it was the 7th, we had over 2,000 people running one of the most beautiful courses you can imagine. On the 5th, I spoke at the initial class for the Key to the City program, which is put out by the city clerk, it's a very popular program, where you can learn all about how the city operates. Again, the Real Estate Summit, the LAAC World's Fair. Today, this morning, was the Alameda County Transportation Commission, the 580 Subcommittee. Right now, the hot lanes are bringing in, and the toll lanes are bringing in about a million dollars of revenue a month, and all that has to stay within this transit corridor. We had the Planning Policy and Ledge Committee. One of the items going through the legislature right now is ACA 1, and this would be to reduce the voting threshold to 55% for infrastructure projects. We also talked in great length about CASA. And, now I remember they've been working on CASA, and of course, the San Jose and San Francisco, and everybody's been working on this for almost two years now. And, in January, Santa Clara and San Francisco Counties both added 9,000 new jobs, but no housing. So, despite the fact that CASA's been working on this for two years, they haven't gotten the message. We need to put housing where the jobs are, we need to take the jobs and put them where the housing is, and make those connections with the, with transit. So with that, that's all that I've got. Remember that March 14th is coming up, that is International Pi Day, 314. And with that, we adjourn until March 18th. Thank you very much.